Three minutes of leave way, we had a closed session, we went over a little bit. I'd like to call to order the City of San Carlos Succession Agency, the Relevancy Meeting for June 12, 2017. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Walpe, are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
None this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Rubens, any report from closed session?
No report, direction given.
All right. Item five is public comment. This is for folks who would like to comment on items not on the posted agenda. Try to keep this to two minutes when you come up. I have just one card, I believe, and so Teresa Lingso. Oh, the chamber. You got select, you drew the short straw tonight?
Well, I'm here in behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, and so I just wanted to remind you of a few events that are coming up. One is the ongoing Sunday's Farmers Market, which is doing really, really well and growing every year. We've got Boba Guy's ribbon cutting on June 13th and hope that some of you can make it, that'll be at 5:30. And the June Membership Mixer at Arbor Bay School on June 14th from 5:30 to 7:00. And then there's on June 21st at Devil's Canyon Brewing Company from 5:00 to 7:00 is a marketing and growing the building materials and construction industry in San Carlos. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Teresa. Appreciate you coming tonight. Anyone else wishing to speak on any item not on the posted agenda tonight? All right, thank you. Item six is approval of consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item I.
I, okay. Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the others.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of items A through H, J, and J.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on those items? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. All right, we'll take that at the end of the day, or end of the evening, should I say? Hope it's not going to be the day. Item seven, unfinished business. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the St. Francis Way and Beverly Drive Traffic Calming Project, authorizing the advertising for bids, authorizing expenditures of a construction budget with contingencies, and authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder if its bid is within the construction budget.
Mr. Mayor, did we not miss item 7A?
I'm sorry, that's what I'm re-
We're on amended agenda.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I didn't get the, obviously, the amended agenda, so that's a little bit of a problem. Can't do it if I don't have it.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. I know the old people who have paper sometimes have trouble, but that's all right, he's just going to get it for me. I check them off, so I'm going to mark this up. All right. Okay, let's move on into whatever number we're supposed to be on. That's six.
Seven A.
Seven A, all right. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign the June 1, 2017 Climate Mayor Statement in support of a Paris Climate Agreement. A report, verbal only. Who's verbally going to give this report?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just catching up here myself. At Friday's retreat of the City Council, the council discussed wanting to agendize tonight's meeting to put this particular letter on, which is a, it's almost more of a petition than the typical letter that we sent, but it would allow, the council would give direction allowing Mayor Grisilli to sign the petition on behalf of the City of San Carlos endorsing the Paris Climate Accords, which I think everybody is aware have been highly profiled in national news and international news lately. So I don't have a whole lot more for you beyond that. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
All right, any comments or questions from the dance?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick question of Jeff. Jeff, how does that relate to the state of California obligations that we operate under? Imagine the details are different, but just in general.
Yeah, I mean, the details are different. We'd have to do more of a specific analysis, but like most things, California, we take what, you know, the federal government's doing and the world's doing, and we, you know, try to push it further. So I think within the state of California, there are still quite a few climate protections in place and many regulations and laws that the City of San Carlos has to comply with that have nothing to do with the Paris Accords, which really, you know, dealt more with federal national standards for the United States.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Is there anyone in the public wishing to talk on this item? All right. Entertain a motion, then.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the June 1, 2017 Climate Mayor Statement in support of the Paris Climate Agreement.
A second? All right, moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcut?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. All right, thank you. I think I'm back on track now. How about 8A? Is that good?
Works for me.
Works for you? All right. And since I already read it, Mr. Walter, you're up.
Members of the City Council, Jay Walter, your Public Works Director tonight, and we're here to talk about the Traffic Calming Plan for St. Francis Way in particular. So, just as a way of an update, the item tonight originally was put on the agenda in the hope that we would be asking you to approve, or excuse me, adopt a resolution to award a contract for the construction portion of this project. However, on Friday, we opened bids, and we had some bad news. Uh-oh. There was bad news on Friday, the Warriors game. That was later in the day. But we had some bad news with our bids for this St. Francis Way Beverly Drive Traffic Calming Project in that we had bids that came in more than twice the engineer's estimate. And so, as it relates to that, I won't be asking you to award that contract or appropriate the additional money, because as we talked to the contractors who did bid the work, it was clear that they were throwing in a bid to throw in a bid, and not, these bids were not, say, you know, in good stead for the work that we wanted to have done. So unfortunately, that's a part of what tonight will change, and we won't be asking you to award that contract. We will come back with that project, and we will do that work in the fall to put it out to bid again, because we would like to get that work done, but we'd rather have it be more realistic in terms of the bids. So tonight, what we do want, however, is we still want direction on the one particular element of the Traffic Calming Plan, which has kind of still got some opposition and support for it, and that's the placement of one or two speed humps in the corridor. And I'll go through that in terms of the particular location. So some background for those who would be watching from home, perhaps, back in early 2013, we began to hear from residents, there was a real need for some traffic calming in this St. Francis Way corridor. 2014, we hired a consultant to come in, collect data along the corridor, do measurements of speed and volumes and widths and things like that. And in July of 2015, we went ahead with some recommended improvements for the corridor for traffic calming. We presented those to the Transportation and Circulation Commission and had quite a bit of public input at that time. And then in January of 2016, we installed some temporary measures, and the council has heard of those before as well as the public, but those were things that simulated bulbouts and a traffic circle in the corridor, and we put in some temporary speed humps. And these were all designed to be done in advance of any permanent improvements, so that we could see how well they worked or how well they didn't work. And then in April, we collected data from the temporary measures, shared that with the TNC, and then came to the City Council about a year ago to talk about the final plan that we were recommending. And at that time, we got direction from the council. The traffic circle idea needed to be rethought, come up with a different strategy at the intersection of Emerald at St. Francis, and we had a direction to move forward with the permanent speed humps in that section between Elm and Chestnut. And then in July, we went back to the TNC with some ideas for what we could do at Emerald and St. Francis. And then back in February of this year, we went to the TNC again with the final plan, after collecting data, coming up with the designs that we needed to do, bringing it forward. The TNC was favorable to the plan at three out of the four locations, but because there were residents there who were unhappy with the idea of having a speed hump in front of their particular property, they made a recommendation that only one speed hump be placed in that block of St. Francis, and excluded the one in kind of the 1700 area of St. Francis. And that was because of some residents' objections there. So again, to remind council of what we will be implementing at Walnut and St. Francis, what you can see on the left of the picture is we're installing some concrete bulbouts at the intersection here, and essentially a crosswalk, which, this is just two pictures kind of of the same area, not one on top of the other, just to make it a little less confusing. But we'll have crosswalks there and bulbouts that will help focus those crossings and red curb back in the areas as you approach to increase visibility. And that had some very favorable reviews. At Park and St. Francis, what we're installing is a median area curb as well as a crosswalk at that location, and that's one which, again, this is designed to slow traffic, and we've had in place there some temporary measures of a similar variety, but they're not curb, so that'll be the difference here. So we're moving forward with that one as part of the project. And then down at Emerald and St. Francis, what we have is, at this location towards the west, we have a narrowing of the street with a bulbout on both sides, and then a crosswalk in between here. And then this other concrete work is because we had a valley gutter on this side that we had to relocate as part of maintaining drainage through the intersection, and this intersection will be repaved. But essentially, that's the solution we came up with for Emerald at St. Francis. And then the issue of speed humps. From Chestnut to Elm, we had a temporary speed hump that was installed in the vicinity of 1725 St. Francis Way. We were proposing to put one back in a permanent form, that is with asphalt, at the same location, where it could be varied by 10 or 15 feet, but generally speaking, in the same location. And then back along the 1500 block, the second speed hump, which is one which the TNC had, there were no objections, at least from residents, in this particular location, and the TNC had recommended going forward with that speed hump as part of the plan. So the speed humps themselves are now about 400 feet apart, as they're replaced. It essentially kind of lines up, divides that section into thirds, which helps keep the speeds from getting too high as you leave the stop sign and then proceed through that section of the corridor. The width of the speed hump, 10 feet wide, the other one's 15 feet wide, but that's kind of a dimension at this point that's up for some judgment in terms of how well it fits in the area between where you might have a driveway or some other thing that you didn't want to impede. So we would have between 10 and 15 feet wide, the asphalt speed humps. The current speed humps that are there now are the temporary variety. These can be removed and reused at any other location. They have about 100 bolts that hold them down. That's just to make sure that the vehicles and traffic don't pick them up over a period of time. But these will be removed. And as part of the plan, what I've shown here is a picture that sort of shows, this has the, one of the speed humps that's on Cordillars Avenue. And essentially, it's an asphalt speed hump, smooth transition on the edges and up over the top compared to, whoops. Sorry about that. Compared to the more abrupt leading edge and trailing edge and high rise of the temporary So, as part of the process, the city contacted the affected residents in the vicinity of, in the 1500 block where the temporary speed hump was, asked them about the permanent speed hump installation, and we didn't receive any objections from neighbors in that particular section, so we planned to move forward with the speed hump in approximately the same location. However, when we contacted the residents in the vicinity of 1724, 1725, where the current speed hump's located, talking to them about the permanent installation, at first, the resident at 1725 St. Francis Way expressed real concern about this. This was voiced at the TNC meeting about excessive noise from vehicles crossing the speed hump, even vehicles coming down the block and honking their horn as they went over the speed hump. And so, some real concerns there. We went out and we met with the owner at this particular property and explained the difference between the temporary speed hump and the permanent speed hump, and this property owner has since indicated an acceptance of a speed hump at this location, if that's for the good of the corridor. The resident at 1717 St. Francis Way, which is next door, expressed in an email over the weekend that they were in support of a placement of the speed hump if it was in the vicinity of their property, which is, was very helpful. And the resident at 1732 St. Francis has continued to express concerns about the speed hump and has asked that it not be placed in front of her property. So that's kind of where we are with the speed humps. We have some support, but we still have some concerns, and that's one of the things that we need to have the council decide for us tonight. So for tonight, the recommendations that we have for you, to not approve the resolution that we had planned and put together with the staff report, so that option would be to not approve it, because this contract is not ready to go and we don't have the money to fund it. Give us direction to rebid this project in the fall. We'll bring it back, re-advertise it, and we believe we'll get competitive bids that will keep us within the range of our estimate. And the other thing we need the council to do tonight is to approve the Traffic Calming Plan for St. Francis Way with specific direction to either include or exclude the second speed hump in the 1700 block. So that's what we need from you tonight. And at this point, I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Obert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jay. Just a couple of questions. I presume that during the period of time when we were waiting to rebid the project, we plan on leaving the temporary measures that have been installed in place, correct? We're not talking about removing those?
That's correct. We'll leave them in place.
Is there lifespan sufficient that they'll make it through the end of the year?
The speed humps in particular, yes. Some of the delineators are being replaced as they get knocked down. We would just continue to do that between now and the end of the year or when we rebid.
And I presume those are probably relatively inexpensive?
That's correct.
Individually, okay. You and I had talked offline a little bit that I'd like to touch on here, is, can you walk us through what the options are for potentially not ever putting permanent speed humps in, but leaving them as temporary and moving them from time to time? In other words, sort of sharing the pain, to the extent there is any, with the noise that gets caused by vehicles going over them?
Yes. So the temporary speed humps that have been placed, in what we had planned to do as we go forward, and let's say the project went forward and we placed permanent ones, those could be removed and replaced almost anywhere to be used as temporary speed humps as we would evaluate their effectiveness. But in this particular case, if the speed humps were, if the temporary speed humps were desired to be used going forward, they could be moved essentially from in front of one property set to another property set, the ability being just to remove the bolts, pull them up, move them down, drill them in, and leave them in place. So to some degree, there is an ability to move them around so that you could share the, I won't say the pain, but share the reduction in speeds that come from having the speed humps right in front of a property. There's some difficulty just in terms of being able to coordinate with driveways and cross streets and things like that so that you can find optimal placement, but there is an ability to be able to move them around if needed.
And not to mention, I think, as you've touched on a couple of times before, the temporary speed humps by their nature are inherently noisier than the permanent speed humps, because they're not sculpted the same way.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few questions. I got an email from a gentleman who said that we should take out the speed bumps and lower the speed limit to 20 miles an hour and then monitor that area heavily. Has there been any consideration about what happens when you lower a speed limit to 20 miles an hour?
Well, according to state law, you really don't have the ability to arbitrarily lower a speed limit to 20 miles per hour, except in certain conditions. Generally, that's related to alleys that are blind in downtown business areas. To some degree, some school locations can be done that way, but generally speaking, our local streets have a prima facie speed, which means a speed that is set by the expectation for the use of that street at 25 miles per hour. So there really isn't an ability for us to arbitrarily lower that speed. And as far as enforcement goes, there can always be enforcement that's used on a particular street segment, and we work with the sheriff's office all the time to do that, but we really don't have the ability to arbitrarily lower that speed limit.
Thank you. And then, the temporary measures, I recall last year when we were discussing those whole thing, there was a lot of concern about some of the things that were tried, and those were eliminated, and what was left were what we've been having last year. Have those met with the success that you thought that they would?
Yes, they have, and we have had a, I'd say, broad support from the, kind of the neighborhood collectively for those improvements. There have been some folks who have been particularly, who felt they were not exactly what was needed, particularly in the vicinity where they were placed, but we expected that there probably would be a few that maybe wouldn't agree with everything we were trying. But I think we've met with good broad support for what we put into the corridor as a whole.
So generally, well-received. All right. The other thing I thought about is, what about the idea, and I did, I will admit, I thought of this tonight as you were making your presentation, about moving both speed bumps to the 1400 to 1600 block? Any thought to that, or does that leave too big a gap then between Gover and Chestnut and Cedar?
Well, as I briefly touched on, one of the difficulties of that block is that its overall length, essentially from stop sign at Elm to stop sign at Chestnut, if you place the speed humps in such a way that there's too great a distance between a stop sign and one of the speed humps, your speeds will get too high as they then would approach that speed hump. So the design of this has been to break that section into about thirds, so that you would have a relatively same speed reaching each of the speed humps that you would then to the third, or to the second stop sign at the end of the corridor. So the even placement of that is what kind of tends to get this, keep the speeds lower versus having a longer stretch where cars will tend to get up a higher speed when they reach the next speed hump.
And then, I've gone over that Cordillars speed hump, and it seems rather benign. So has it had the intended effect on that part of Cordillars that you thought it might?
It has. We have lower speeds there. I think that some vehicles can tend to traverse that speed hump at at least 25 to, let's say, almost 30 miles an hour and have not a lot of an effect on the car. But my own personal observations in that corridor have been that the vast majority of the cars slow as they reach those speed humps to go over them. So I do believe we've had the intended effect with the two that we've placed there.
Okay. Yeah, I've ridden over those several times, but I do drive over the ones on St. Francis virtually every day of the week, and they do feel different, much different when you go over them. So the effect of the new one would be more like we have on Cordillars, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
All right. And I know this really wasn't part of the presentation, but it was in our staff report. The issue of traffic calming improvements around Beverly, that's just been completely tabled for now?
It has, because we had combined the two projects essentially for some efficiencies, similar type of work, and we felt like we could get a better price for the two of them combined. So I think what we'll do is, we'll keep them together as we would then bring this back in the fall to advertise again.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Jay. So I just want to again talk about the speed hump on the 1700 block. So in speaking with residents, the concerns that have been raised are primarily about noise?
Yes, that's right. Noise from, say, trucks and/or trailers that cross and that kind of thing.
Okay. And so, therefore, is it your view that if you move it up or down 50 feet or 100 feet, it's not going to have a substantial impact on alleviating the concerns that have been raised?
It would, well, I think by putting in the permanent variety of the speed hump, I think that a good amount of that noise and the jolting will be alleviated. But I do believe that the slowing and stopping and accelerating from a speed hump will still be the same as whether you had it, you know, 50 feet one way or the other.
And just, and I may have missed this in your presentation, but the exact location and its proximity to the one resident who doesn't, who's been consistent in not wanting it there, have we done anything to try and make any accommodations there?
We've, we talked about it on the edge of the property line, and it's still possible that it could be moved a little bit further to the east, which would be off that property. But the feedback from my staff has been that there was still an opposition to having the speed hump in that vicinity.
Okay. So basically, what you're saying is, no matter where we move it, in terms of the place where it will have its most effectiveness, we're still going to get some concerns from a specific property owner?
I believe so.
Okay. And making, moving it substantially farther away, 50 feet, 100 feet, 25 feet, that you're saying is going to reduce the effectiveness of the traffic calming?
If you, yes, if you move it much further to the west, you're too close to the stop sign at Chestnut.
Okay.
If you move it back further, you run into where Gover Lane intersects, and you'd have to go past it then, and I think then you're getting too far to the east.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Growcut?
So a couple of times you mentioned about stop signs that exist already and how that, you know, you didn't say directly, but you kind of alluded that that slows traffic down.
That's right.
So any consideration for, was there any consideration given to adding stop signs along St. Francis as opposed to putting in speed humps?
Back in the beginning, we went through the process. The, generally, the side streets, excuse me, they don't have the volumes that tend to be desired when you have a four-way stop, so we moved away from that idea. So in particular, this area where we would be considering the speed humps, there's only one T-intersection, and it's a very low-volume street, so we felt the stop sign would be not really at all valuable, because everyone would be stopping for virtually no traffic that comes in on the side street. So that's why we stayed away from stop signs.
But following up on that, wouldn't it slow traffic?
Sure it does, but that's not really the purpose of a stop sign.
Are there other places on St. Francis that we perhaps could have added stop signs?
We evaluated that and determined no, that in this corridor section, there were no other places that stop signs were appropriate.
And it's because why?
Because the stop signs generally are used to assign right-of-way at an intersection, which means typically that there's traffic on one street and enough traffic on another street that you need to be able to stop the traffic in order for that traffic to be able to cross and turn or whatever they're going to do. When there's very little side street traffic, it makes everyone on the main street stop in order, even if there's no traffic waiting on the side street. So that's generally when we would stay away from stop signs.
So what I'm hearing is engineers don't look at stop signs as ways to control traffic speed?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. All right, fair enough.
There is a, there's a side benefit to a stop sign in that it does control traffic speed.
All right. We have a number of speakers tonight, so I will start calling names, and if you folks could queue up. The first person I have is Amy Stevenson, followed by Judy Petrali.
Good evening. My mom is in her 80s, and she lives in a board and care facility in Redwood City, and she has progressive dementia. She lives with the Warriors. I would love to be there tonight to watch the game with her.
Wouldn't we all?
And it's kind of- And it's kind of deja vu, because we were here exactly one year ago, on June 13th, when the traffic calming plan was approved. The matter is so important to us, the safety of our children, elderly residents, and our property, and what you heard a year ago is still true today. Speed humps do work. That's why we're here again in person, and have sent letters to you this week and on the weekend. And I'm here to speak on a number of our neighbors who are out of town or who cannot make it this evening. There are several alternative locations that could be considered, as Jay just mentioned, and Mr. Flum at 1717 has agreed to have the hump in front of his property, and we think that that would be an ideal location for the hump. One hump, although appreciated, is not effective to control the length of this street, so we advise you or request that you approve two humps. Thank you. Ms. Petrali is not here this evening. She asked me to read this. Judy has been a resident of St. Francis Way since 1957. She grew up playing on the street. Even after dark, we had no fear of running across the street. However, 60 years later, it's a different story. Prior to the installation of two temporary speed humps, Judy feared for her safety when she wanted to cross the street to talk to her neighbors and friends due to the speeding cars. It was also much harder to back out of her driveway and to turn into it. However, since the two temporary speed humps have been installed, she feels safer and less afraid to cross the street. I know that a car approaching my section of the street will be going slow enough to allow me time to cross, also allowing me easier access in and out of my driveway. I believe having two speed humps have proven to me to be very effective at slowing the traffic on St. Francis Way. I firmly disagree that one of the speed humps should be removed.
Okay, thank you. Since Judy, you spoke for her, the next names I have are Jane Stepek and Frances Gadrell.
I have about 10 of them, if you want me to just continue?
Just a moment, please. Which names do you have, ma'am? I'm sorry, you have more information than I do. I apologize.
I'm sorry. Yes, I have a letter from Ms. Stepek and Mr. Gadrell.
All right, and do you have Moser, too?
I do.
Do you have Hurdle and Ricotta?
I do.
Do you have Vander, Vanderen?
Vanderen, I do.
Vanderen. Do you have Marino?
I do.
Okay. Do you have Kadrika and Ellis?
I do.
Sounds like we're getting married, I do. Nagashima?
Yes.
Okay. Kaufman?
Yes.
Smith?
That is the final one I have.
Smith?
Yes.
All right. Well, what, let me see here, what do we have? What do you have?
You can summarize if there are.
I understand, yeah. So we've got about 10 here. I'll tell you what, I'll give you, I'll give you five minutes. You don't have to, I mean, you don't need to repeat the.
Highlights.
Yeah, highlights. I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you five minutes.
Sounds good. Thank you. Stepek lives on Gover, and in her opinion, the traffic has slowed considerably, and it allows them safer access on and off St. Francis Way via Gover Lane. Jane Stepek and Frances Gadrell. Jim Moser is at 1433 St. Francis Way. He commutes via motorcycle, and he has found since the humps have been installed, it's much easier for him to exit the driveway rather than idling for one or two minutes, which is not good for the air quality nor the pedestrians who are walking by. Ms. Hurdle and Ms. Ricotta are at 1958 St. Francis Way, excuse me, 1517 St. Francis Way, residents for 59 years. They're surprised to see the matter still on the table, as they thought it was resolved last year, and they definitely support the speed humps. Vanderen are both in their 80s, and they live on the northeast corner of St. Francis Way. They have no objection to the current speed humps, and they would like them to be permanent. Marino, is 1600 St. Francis Way. I worried every time my children went to see friends across the street, and I found that pulling out of my driveway was very dangerous, especially during commute time. While at the beginning of the installation of this temporary speed humps, a few drivers honked or had to make sudden stops. That has subsided, as now people know the humps are here. I was shocked to hear the measure that has been so successful in improving safety and quality of life, that has broad support from the residents and has been approved by the city council, is now being reconsidered. Nadi Kadrucci and Scott Ellis, living on 1541 St. Francis Way. Nadi's daughter is 11 years of age, and she goes to Central Middle School. She walks to school every day and has to cross the street every morning and afternoon. Nadi commented that the two speed humps have made it much safer for her to cross the street. They're in full support of two speed humps as well. Elaine Nagashima lives at 1643 St. Francis Way. She lives on the street with her husband and three young children under seven. Her recommendation is to approve both speed humps for St. Francis Way, as two of her children will be walking to White Oaks Elementary School in the fall, and she supports the humps. I guess I'm out of time.
No, I gave you five minutes. That's only two.
Oh, this clock is, sorry.
That's only two.
This clock is wrong.
Just a couple more minutes.
Okay, two more.
No problem.
Matthew and Karen Kaufman at 1618 St. Francis Way. They, along with their children, Zosia, who is nine, and Philip, who is 12, live in between the two speed humps at 1500 and 1700 blocks. Since their installation, they've noticed a significant decrease in speeds on St. Francis Way. It's dramatically improved safety for their children, who frequently walk along St. Francis. Further, we no longer experience near misses with rapidly moving cars while attempting to leave the driveway. Again, they support also the two humps. And the last is my neighbor, Nital and Pat Smith, and they can't be here tonight either. And his email came through just 10 minutes before this meeting, and it's quite lengthy, about eight paragraphs, but I summarized it. Patrick is, he understands that neighbors next door and a few blocks up have issues with the 1700 block. He said regarding the issues brought by my neighbor, the noise, neighbors, the noise will be reduced with permanent humps. He doesn't hear any honking, but that, if there is honking, he feels it's a small sacrifice for the safety of all that live here, especially children. He also points out that the cyclists and pedestrians will continue to benefit from two humps. If one hump is removed, people will simply speed, and that was brought up by numerous other residents here that I didn't verbalize. Pat also talked about a car being totaled in front of his dining room window while he and his children were eating dinner. Every time he pulls into his driveway, he is reminded of that again, and without the two humps, he thinks that more damage will come, and it will continue to be unsafe. They all thank you for the time, and they hope that you'll continue to consider and approve two speed humps. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments on all that. The next speaker, card I have, is Jim Flum. Flum?
Oh, I forgot. I'm so sorry.
That's all right. That's okay. No problem.
It's really easy. We are next door to the 1700 speed bump. We feel the benefits of it are so great that we are open to having it in front of our house. Across the street is a corner house, so hopefully they would not care.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Rebecca Bean? Beard? I'm sorry, I apologize if I missed the last name. Followed by Susan Blau.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Rebecca Bean, and I live at 1732 St. Francis. And I'm here to oppose the speed bump at 1724 slash 1725 St. Francis Way. I have been asking since April 16th of 2016, through emails and meetings, that this speed bump be removed. I live and get the aftermath of everybody going over that speed bump, and it creates a noise disturbance which can be unbearable. At the last meeting I attended, it was recommended that the, the recommendation was made by the TNC to totally remove the speed bump, number one, and keep the speed bump at 1528 St. Francis Way. And I thought that that's what was going to be done. If others are clamoring for a second bump, let the city place it in front of one of their houses. It clearly doesn't do much calming in its current location. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Susan Blau? Followed by Brian Perkins.
Mr. Mayor, city council, I support the removal of the temporary speed bump on the 1700 block of St. Francis for several reasons. The close proximity to the speed bump on the 1400 block, I have observed many drivers who treat the two bumps, because you can see them, obviously, at some distance, like the, that play, the playground, like it's an obstacle course. And so they gun, and then they stop, and then they gun again, and then they stop and gun over it. So this kind of traffic calming, I think, is nonexistent. Or maybe during the day it might be, but the advent of the other people on the street. So the traffic department canvassed two neighbors on the 1700 block to get their okays, to place the temporary speed bump there, because others did not want the bump placed by or in front of their homes. And this was not a decision that was made fairly nor strategically for the purpose of traffic calming. It was just a way to dump the placement of it willy-nilly, because they didn't want Now, one of those two consenting neighbors finds that her peace and quiet is disturbed, although she's probably changed her mind, and she wants the bump moved closer to Ms. Bean's house, which also suffers from increased traffic noise from the temporary and misplaced bump. So I feel that an alternative might be to actually move the bumps closer together, so there could be a dead stop, because right now, again, I've seen a lot of people, I mean, a lot of cars treated as an obstacle course. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Brian Perkins, followed by David Schreier.
Mr. Mayor and members, I live at 2037 St. Francis, and I love what's been done to the street. It's worked out really well. I, myself, I drive over those bumps every day as well. I keep track of it. I'm driving over them at the rate of about 11 to 12 miles an hour, because I can't do any more without damaging the car. I understand that there's problems with noise, but if you think about it, what you're being asked to do is to remove something that's a unified approach to a problem, two speed bumps. If you just do one, you're probably going to wind up with excessive speed before the speed bump and excessive speed after it, without any controlling matters in between. So I don't know whether it's in the correct placement where it is, but it certainly isn't a whole lot different from where it is in all probability, if it's going to work. And in answer to Mr. Grocott's answer, I thought that having a stop sign there at Chestnut would actually work very nicely, but apparently that's not orthodoxy, and so you're not going to get it. I do think that the rest of the measures on the street have worked well, but I would encourage you to leave two speed bumps on that portion of St. Francis. And actually, I'm even considering asking the city for a speed bump near my house, too. I didn't like the idea at first, but since I've seen how well they worked, it might be a good idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Schreier, followed by Manny Gabet.
Mayor, city council, thank you very much. Wanted to say that since the two speed bumps have been in place, speeds on St. Francis have been reduced significantly. It's much safer. I don't think that one speed bump will have the same effect that two do. I think very few solutions will please everybody, so, but it seems like there's a significant majority here of people who agree that two speed bumps are key. At the beginning, there were people who were honking when they passed over. I think that's decreased. We rarely hear that anymore. I beseech Jay to make the speed bumps as high as possible. I agree with Mr. Collins that the ones on Cordilleras are very benign, so I'd say make them high. Finally, we would have no problem with having the speed bumps in front of our house where it's 1600. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Gabet, followed by David Thom.
Yeah, actually, before I begin, I'd like to make an offer to Mr. Walter. If you can give me a truckload of asphalt, I'll install those speed humps for free. Okay, I live at 1403 St. Francis, and for years, my neighbors and I have been pleading with the city to do something about speeding along our street. Last year, we presented petition, signed by nearly every resident along our block, presented to the Transportation and Circulation Commission, asking for the installation of speed humps. By the dozens, we attended two TNC meetings and one city council meeting to show support for the installation of both humps. Everyone else had a story to tell about how the humps had improved our quality of life, including one neighbor who described how one of them likely saved the life of a child who ran into the street. On June 13th, 2016, the city council approved the plan for installing both humps. Now, however, on the basis of just a few complaints about the humps, the decision is up in the air. These complaints are primarily about noise from cars driving over the humps and people honking. With respect to the first issue, I spent some time listening to cars driving over the permanent humps on Cordilleras Street, and they are much quieter than the temporary ones that have a steep lip that creates noise when hit by a car tire. With respect to the honking, why should we let inconsiderate and disrespectful people determine what's best for our neighborhood? The problems plaguing St. Francis are not unique. In fact, I've been contacted by residents from both Eaton and Howard, asking for advice on how to get safety measures installed on their streets. So people are watching, and if they see that it only takes a few complaints to derail a project designed to increase public safety, the outlook for solving these problems is dim. Please support the original plan.
Thank you for your comments. David Thom, followed by Christine Thom.
Hi, I'm David Thom. I live on the corner of Gover Lane and St. Francis for a long time, 20 years. Is it possible that one of the speed bumps could be allowed or built where it's accepted right now, and we could live with it for a while and see how people like it or don't like it? I assume that the one on Cordilleras is much quieter. I've experienced that in other locations. Would it be a good idea, is it realistic, is it practical, to build one speed bump and try it for a while and see if people like it? And if we do, maybe we could build another one. Also, as far as the price of the bids that are taking place right now, the original bid...
Could you sort of speak to us?
You bet.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The price of the bids that were originally accepted were at what period of time?
I don't know. We'll find out.
I was asking Jay.
I know, we'll find out.
So, my thought here right now is the reason they're higher possibly is there's a lot of that type of work taking place, in which contractors can pad their contracts or their estimates. Possibly when the original estimates were given, there was less of this type of work taking place, so the price of the contracts or the estimates were lower. That's my thinking there. So maybe if you wait till a slower time of the year, or where there's less building, which I don't see happening for a long time, maybe the price of that work will come down.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Hello, I'm Christine Thom, and I've lived on Gover Lane in St. Francis for 28 years. And I would like to see a stop sign put at Gover and St. Francis instead of a speed bump, and maybe a crosswalk, because there's a lot of children walking up St. Francis that cross at Gover Lane, because it's a one-block-long street, goes to White Oaks, and then up to the school, which is another block away. So I would like, instead of a speed bump, a stop sign, and have the traffic stop, instead of just speeding up, humping over, and speeding up again until they get to the stop sign at Cedar. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay. Gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, I had one more question for staff. Jay, this is similar to what Mr. Thom had brought up, a little bit different. Would I be correct in assuming from what you told us before, that in your expert professional judgment, the, running an experiment where we first put in one speed hump, and then if we need to put in the second one, would be sort of a pointless experiment to run, because it really won't do the speed reduction that we want to have see happen?
That would be my opinion, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Grocott?
I'm going to come back to the stop sign question, because when you gave your answer, you talked about, at least the way it came across to me, vehicular traffic. And what I heard during public comment, especially from the lady that read all the letters from the... from the different people, is, you know, concern seems to be being able to cross the street safely without getting run over. And so what I'm not hearing is consideration for stop signs relative to pedestrian and bicycle traffic, which I know we have a lot of, especially in the morning, with kids going to school. Because I know when I bring, you know, I run up to Kenyatta with my son, and when I come back, I'm coming back at the peak hour that people are trying to get to school. And, you know, whether it's St. Francis, or whether it's Cordilleras, or whatever, you see just a lot of kids out just before 8:00, you know, that 7:45 to 8:00 time, on scooters, bicycles, walking, walking with their parents. And is there any consideration for that kind of traffic when it comes to stop signs?
All I can tell you is that when we hired the consultant to look at options out there, the stop signs didn't come up as an option as it related to speed control in the corridor. And that was primarily the main complaint in the corridor. So the installation of the temporary speed humps that we put in have succeeded in bringing the speeds down in the corridor, and that's partly what you've been hearing from the residents at not only this meeting, but at meetings before as well. So I think we did achieve an ability for people to feel more comfortable with getting out of their driveways, crossing the street, and that kind of thing. Stop signs themselves, sure, there would be probably more compliance with stop signs that you placed. And certain times of day, it might make things a little easier, but the bottom line with the stop sign is it requires everybody to stop 24 hours a day, seven days a week, even when there's no traffic or no issue there. So that's the reason why, in this particular case, we didn't recommend any stop signs further there.
But Jay, what I'm hearing is we didn't ask the consultant to look at that.
We did.
It sounds like we could ask the consultant to look at it in terms of pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, scooter traffic, whatever. And also, this is a little bit of a, you know, just giving you an opinion here, we're encouraging people to ride their bikes and scooters, get out of cars, and so forth, but I don't see us, you know, making that adjustment in our minds when it comes to how we look at things like stop signs with traffic. We're just, what I'm hearing from you is we're just looking at cars meeting at intersections and needing to, you know, somebody needs to stop and give way and so forth, not necessarily creating a situation where, because a car is stopped, they're looking, and then if there's a pedestrian there, you know, you get that eye contact business that goes on, and one person says, yeah, go ahead, and so forth. I don't hear that coming from the consultant or wherever.
Well, the three out of the four locations that we're installing improvements include crosswalks, bulbous, to narrow the roadway, to allow for better visibility of pedestrians as they would cross the streets at those three locations. So I think we did consider, from a pedestrian standpoint, I think we've got some good elements in the plan that I think will help in that regard. As far as stop signs, that we didn't believe that they would be more appropriate or a better enhancement than what we've got planned, at least so far.
Okay. And those crosswalks and these bulbous, we don't even have anything mocking that up right now.
Only just the, where we had the delineators that created the island area. These will be built with concrete, and, you know, they'll be so extremely visible and not something that you can just simply drive over, as sometimes happens with those delineators.
Thank you.
Mr. Albert.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jay, when the work was, I don't remember, when the work was done studying the traffic flow here, in terms of stop signs, were the warrants met? Would the warrants be met for stop signs?
There were no warrants met in the corridor for additional stop signs.
And that was not because we didn't study it, it's because the warrants weren't met?
That's right. The consultant looked at, I forget which of the intersections, but there were no, essentially none of the warrant criteria were met by those.
For the benefit of refreshing my memory and for educating the public, would either you or Greg please summarize what this phrase, meeting or not meeting the warrants, means regarding stop signs?
Sure. The placement of stop signs generally is supposed to be, it's set up under state law, vehicle code, where the criteria that you look at and consider for the placement of a stop sign is not simply just to slow traffic down or control speeds. It's to assign right away at an intersection where there are significant delays that are occurring on a side street, because they can't, they simply can't get out. And so a volume warrant would be one where, if you had certain volume on a main street, and then a certain volume of traffic on a side street, that would meet a volume warrant criteria for being able to consider placement of a four-way stop. Another criteria would be collision experience, and that would be where an intersection has collisions that occur that would be considered correctable by installation of a four-way stop. Sometimes that's when a vehicle makes a hasty decision to pull out in front of traffic, because it can't. It's too, the volumes are too high, there's not enough gaps, or things like that. Sometimes it's turning traffic that, you know, doesn't see the traffic until too late. And those are the type of collisions that are correctable by stop signs. So generally, those are the ones, there's a couple others that relate to schools, but those are the two primary warrants that we use to consider stop signs.
And just again, to refresh my memory and for educating folks, this may be a Greg My understanding is there's actually nothing that prohibits us from putting a stop sign up wherever we want, but there are consequences to doing that if the warrants aren't met. Could you refresh my memory on that?
This, thank you, Councilman Robert. This is an issue of liability and loss of design immunity. You may recall, when we discussed the traffic calming at Cordilleras, this almost identical issue came up about a request for a stop sign at Elizabeth and Cordilleras. And in that review, I did research and looked at the issue of design immunity, and the warrants are tied to that, because the engineering judgment that's required to get design immunity are tied into these warrants. So if we don't have engineering judgment that leads to the installation of a stop sign or other type of traffic control, we could lose design immunity, and if there's an accident, that could become a factor in assigning liability.
Last question. Has the city of San Carlos ever been sued and had to rely upon design immunity in a situation involving stop signs?
Well, I probably would need to get back to it. I mean, that is an issue in a lot of lawsuits involving traffic. Off the top of my head, I can't think of any particularly involving a stop sign, but I could get back to you offline on that.
Okay.
In addition, I'll just add one point that's relevant to that question, too. Any enforcement tickets that are written for a stop sign that doesn't meet warrants, if challenged, would be thrown out in traffic court. So while you can write the ticket, and maybe somebody will pay it, maybe not, it could be challenged on those same grounds of not meeting state law.
Okay. So, gentlemen, what do you want to do? Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the traffic calming plan for St. Francis Way, including the second speed hump in the 1700 block of St. Francis Way.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, may I offer a friendly amendment?
Please.
And that would be to, actually, just to ask staff, as they continue to move forward with this, since we're not building things immediately, to continue to work with the neighbors and see if perhaps there might be a way to relocate the contested speed hump so as to minimize the impact it's causing, without damaging its ability, without reducing its ability to reduce traffic speeds.
It's up to the maker to accept it, not me. Yeah, I'd be happy to accept that. I assume that staff has that discretion under the current motion, but I think...
Oh, okay.
I agree with the sentiment.
Okay. Thank you.
Does the second agree with the sentiment?
I agree.
Okay. All right. Any other comments?
Yeah, well, discussion-wise, I would say to eliminate the second speed hump, because what I heard from Jay is, when I was asking about the stop signs, and he highlighted the fact that there's other things that are going in as well, crosswalks, and chokers, and so forth. And personally, I'd rather see all those things put in, including one speed hump, and let's see how the traffic responds to that. If we need a second hump, we can put one in later, but I'd rather go a piece at a time. So I'll make a motion.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we approve the traffic calming plan for St. Francis Way, excluding the second hump in the 1700 block of St. Francis Way.
Is there a second to that motion? Failing to hear a second. That didn't go.
So... That'd be nice.
That'd be nice. Okay. Any other comments?
I just want to make a brief statement. First, I just, I really wanted to thank all the residents of St. Francis Way. When I first ran for office, I remember walking down the street on a very hot Saturday afternoon, knocking on doors, and door after door after door, you know, this was the top topic on people's minds. And, you know, it really impressed upon me that we really do have a significant public safety issue on St. Francis Way. A lot of times, when you hear residents will come up to all of us and to the staff and say, you know, I want a stop sign here, or I'm concerned about a crosswalk here, what do I do? And I say, well, you know, you need to talk to your neighbors, you need to get the whole street or the whole block behind it, and oftentimes, we never hear from them again. But in this case, you know, I think the neighborhood has really come through and followed through, through what is a, I'm sorry to say, a long process. And, you know, we want to make sure that we go through and consider all the trade-offs and give everyone an opportunity to weigh in. And in that spirit, I want to say, you know, with any public decision, there are trade-offs that have to be made. And, you know, I do hear the concerns from those who don't want a speed hump in front of their house, and I appreciate it, and I think it's a legitimate point of view. But we have to make the trade-off, and in this case, I think that it's best to side with public safety and best to side with our expert opinions about what's going to make the street as safe as possible. I'll just say, from my own personal experience, I live around the corner from Cordilleras, I drive that very frequently. I know that those two speed humps have had a big impact on calming the traffic in a place where a lot of kids walk to school, and I know that they're going to have a big impact in a positive way for St. Francis. So again, I just want to say thank you for following through on this process.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to say thank you. As many of you know, I am your neighbor. I do drive down St. Francis every day. I live around the corner from all of you. I would love a stop sign at Chestnut in St. Francis. That would be great. I also wouldn't mind one at Gover in St. Francis. That would be fine with me. But having lived through this experience on Cordilleras and learning about the whole warrants process, we all heard that before. I was, it was good to have Councilmember Robert ask the question again, because putting a stop sign wherever we want is not something that we can do without some sort of consequences. So it's, you know, it's uncomfortable for me in some ways, uncomfortable for me in other ways, to side one way or the other, because I'm so close to all of you. But, and I'd also like that speed hump removed, but I realize that, you know, there are things that I want that I can't have, and I try to take into consideration all the factors involved in staff's recommendations. Some of you may recall that last year, staff's recommendation was no speed bumps at all. And we said we want them, and I believe I was one of the strongest proponents for putting in those speed bumps. My wife told me she wants one on the 1800 block. I'm not sure my next-door neighbor wants that. He might, I don't know, I haven't talked to him about it. But it's, you know, there is no perfect solution here. There just isn't. But I can tell you from personal experience that I do see people slowing down, that having that second speed bump makes it easier for people to make left turns off of Chestnut and Gover. Perhaps maybe at some point, we can put in a crosswalk with, you know, those little lights that light up somewhere on St. Francis that would allow people to cross. It's something I think staff can look at as well. And I also remember that when the speed bumps went in on Cordilleras, we stopped getting emails. I think I got one about a year later, and it was from an absentee homeowner that had been gone for a year and found it when she came back. But again, as Mr. Johnson said, I thank you all for coming out. Input is always good, whether it's for something or against something, it always gives us something to think about. We all value what you say, and I thank you for it. So that's all I have.
Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to touch briefly on a comment that a couple of speakers made, which, and I saw in some emails that we got, about people expressing a level of frustration with, why are you guys even discussing this still? I thought we agreed to do this last year. The process of putting these kinds of investments in place is a long-drawn-out one, precisely because it affects so many different people in different ways. And this really wasn't a matter of so much revisiting the issue as it was confirming the decision to move forward to put in the permanent, authorize putting in the permanent structures, after having gained experience from the temporary ones. So that's just sort of an educational comment. I, too, want to make sure that folks understand, I definitely understand where the neighbors who are concerned about the noise they're experiencing, I really feel for them. I think it's important for all of us to remember, you know, everybody senses things differently. We all have different levels of sensitivity and things that, this morning, I was struck by the fact that there was a small rattle in my car, which my daughter mostly drives, and it was driving me insane. And yet, it obviously had been there for a long time, and it wasn't bothering her at all. So, you know, we need to recognize that we each experience things differently. And in that regard, too, I also would like to say I really appreciated those individuals who, both tonight and in the prior emails that we all got, wrote to us. I had some dialogue with some folks about this idea of potentially moving speed humps. And I had quite a few people step forward and say, move it in front of my house. I know the noise is there, and I'll take it, because I want the benefit, and I don't care. And I think that's a great sign of how strong this community is. And I'd ask everybody, frankly, to remember how strong this community is, and you are a neighborhood. Reach out to each other, and reach out to those people who are experiencing this in a negative way, too. You know, don't necessarily put them outside of your orbit. Reaching out and talking to folks about stuff and explaining about how you appreciate the sacrifice that they are being required to make with the decision we're making, that's an important part of maintaining a neighborhood as well. And so I hope that you'll do that as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Grocott, last comment?
Yeah. First, I just want to explain my vote. I'm going to vote no, because I do think we should take it a step at a time, not because I'm opposed to the whole idea of traffic calming here on St. Francis. And I just wanted to add that, you know, we were, I forget, I guess it was at the council retreat, Cameron mentioned this, and it was a real dismay to me to figure this out or to learn about it, that one of the things that we have going on here, and the reason we have to go through this and neighbors have to come and speak about traffic calming on St. Francis, is because of technology, because Waze and maps and all these applications are telling people, if you want to go through San Carlos, take St. Francis. And I'll bet you, a lot of those people that are speeding through your neighborhood and honk on the horn and aren't very good neighbors, aren't neighbors at all. They're people from other cities who come through our neighborhood, trying to get over to wherever they're going for work. And to me, that's just completely unfortunate, and, you know, but there's, I guess there's just no way to control that, is there? So we have to put up with it. But that is what it is. You take the good with the bad with technology, I guess.
Okay. I will be voting yes on this. Also, I know there's a lot of noise with the temporary ones. I was walking on St. Francis the other day, and I saw cars going by. There is a thickness to that, as Jay knows, and they do bump a little. But when the regular bumps go in, and God willing, it'll be within three months, we'll get started on that, they are a lot flatter. I've driven on them in Burlingame, down Hillside Drive, I've driven on Cordilleras, and they don't have the sound, any way, shape, or form, the sound that these have. It's unfortunate that some folks have to have it in front of their house. It's like having a telephone pole, it's like having a stop sign, it's like having a million other things that you might not want to have in front of your house, but you have it. So again, as was said earlier, what we try to do up here is go for the, should we say, we have to rely on the entire, our decisions have to, should reflect the entire city, not just parts of it. And sometimes we get it right, sometimes we don't, but we do our due diligence, and hopefully, we come out on top. But we do our due diligence, and hopefully, we come out on top. So there's a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisley.
Yes. All right. Moving on, we'll move on to 9A, public hearing. If folks are going to be leaving, if they want to leave, that'd be fine. Take a second here. All right. 9A, public hearing, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the placement of sidewalk repair charges on the property tax roll pursuant to Section 12.04.030 of the San Carlos Municipal Code. Grace?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Grisley, City Engineer. For the city's municipal code, Section 12.04.020, sidewalk maintenance is the responsibility of the adjacent property owners. The city does have a program to help with the process and the financial burden of the repairs. This program, the city would contract with a contractor and coordinate all the repairs, and the homeowner will reimburse the city. The property owners can opt out of the program and do the, and hire their own contractor, get the permits, and do the works themselves. Even before, even before the city's contractor go out and perform the work, the city will give the property owner an estimate of the cost of the repair. After the construction is complete, the property owner will get an invoice for the cost. If it goes unpaid, the city extends a second invoice as a reminder. And if that goes unpaid, then the property owner will receive a notice stating tonight's public hearing and the city's intention to place the charges on the county property tax roll. For the 2016-17 sidewalk project, we had two task orders. They were both completed in February 2017. The cost for both task order was a little over $200,000. Ninety-six sidewalk locations were repaired. In your attachment, too, you see 21 locations that have charges unpaid. As of today, I believe, three has paid. So they're, so the property, even after tonight's action, the property owners can still pay and will be able to remove their property from placing into the tax roll. But there is a deadline, and the deadline to the county is August 3rd. So after August 3rd, the county will not accept any other changes. The recommendation for tonight is to conduct a public hearing, to hear the property owner's testimony, and to adopt a resolution approving the placement of sidewalk charges on the property tax roll.
Okay, thank you, Grace. I'm sorry, was there any more?
No, I'll be happy to take questions.
Questions for Grace? All right, seeing no questions, we have some speakers. Cheryl Bueno.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. I'm Cheryl Bueno. I live at 958 Lupin Way. I prepared something to read, but now I'm not sure if what I have here is premature or not because, little background, I did have my sidewalk tagged and repaired, and we did pay our bill. Okay? The other day, and I was talking with Anthony down in the Pub Department of, or the Works, Public Works, and he was really nice to me, even though I was probably very frustrating to him. So I apologized to him if he's here. Anyway, I was walking my dog the other day, and I, on Lower Lupin Way, and I tripped on the sidewalk. And I thought to myself, "You know what? I'm going to go talk to the neighbor because I just went through this whole ordeal, and maybe she's unaware of it." So I knocked on the door and said hello and to let her know that I was all right. I'm not complaining or anything, but I just wanted her to know what I had been through. And she told me that she has lived there for decades, longer than I have lived. I've lived up there for 16 years, almost 17 years. Never has anyone ever tripped on her sidewalk. She's never had a complaint. And as far as she knows, the city is going to help her pay for her sidewalk. So I said, "Oh, okay. I didn't mean to, you know, upset you. I just wanted to let you know what I had been through." And that's that. So the next day, when Monday came, I gave a call to the city to find out if that is true. Is the city going to pay for half the cost of her sidewalk to be prepared? And Anthony told me, "Yes," that it was voted on here. So now, I don't know if it was or not because apparently, it's going, it was voted on.
It was.
Okay, it was. Okay, great. So, then I would like to be reimbursed for half the cost.
Understand.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks for your comments. Raisin Breslin?
Hi, good evening. It's Jean Breslin.
Sorry.
No problem. And I'm a resident here in San Carlos, and I'm one of the 21 out of 96 who has not paid for their sidewalk repair. My issue is, is I believe that my charges were overestimated. The square footage specifically was overestimated by about 30%. And I am in discussion with the Public Works Department to have them come out and reassess it. So until that gets resolved, I just wanted to hold off on the payment, but I'm happy to pay if it's accurate.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. You did hear about the date of August 3rd, so make sure you're talking to them. All right, good. Thank you. Last speaker card I have is Carrie Renard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am a resident, and I was going to present my personal story, but to be very brief, it was not my sidewalk that was repaired, that I paid for, I don't know, perhaps a year ago or so. I'm a longtime resident, 30 years, and I paid for many sidewalk repairs due to the city's liquid amber tree, which continues to tower over Britton Avenue, and its roads have destroyed at least two lawns, my lawns, and then most recently, and our driveway itself. Most recently, in the last couple of years, it had, it destroyed the city's curb, raising it by a good number of inches. I contacted the city and was told that repairs were going to be going out, the estimates, et cetera, or I could pay for it, do it myself. Well, I allowed the city to go forward with its estimate. In fact, it was repaired, I gave my, our permission last summer. I believe that's when our estimate was, we received it, and then waited, and waited until February of this year. I was, it has been repaired. The curb was repaired beautifully. The gutter in the street was repaired, and not the sidewalk, not, but the area of cement which connects the street to our driveway was also replaced, although I didn't think that was necessary, but I'm not a repair person anyway. I have, I'm one of the 21 or 26 that have not yet paid. I knew that the council was considering, for the last several months, sharing the cost with the homeowner. I heard, learned that the council had approved it. I didn't hear the date. I have since learned it's the 27th of February, and my work was done in February of this year. And so I would like to be considered for the city to share the cost with me. It was $3,000 plus a few. And so I'm requesting that. I'm also requesting that anybody that might find this a hardship or be in similar circumstances would be considered that they might be grandfathered in with the decision of the council to share the cost with the homeowner. I thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Gentlemen? Don't all talk at once.
We move to close the public hearing.
That would be fine. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Let's move to close the public hearing. Any discussion here? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this? I want to make sure. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay. Okay, now, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, I had a question for Jay.
Sure.
Or Grace.
Sure.
The woman who mentioned that she's asked the city to come reassess the, or reappraise the square footage, are you aware of that, and what implications does that have for tonight's action?
I'm just aware of it today. I think she called today, Public Works. So the implication is, we still want the same action by council, and if it's, if it needs to be changed, we can change the amount. If she, if the property owner pays, we can take that off the row. So it's really, those are the, these are, attachment to is the maximum property that we can refer over to the county. If we don't need to, we won't have to. But we would like to have the action taken by council so we could meet the deadline.
Okay. So staff is going to look at it, and if you determine that the fee is too high, then you'll reduce it even if we pass this tonight?
Right. So they're, I think, believe the request is the square footage is incorrect, so we'll look at the square footage of what was repaired.
Okay. And I, just to confirm, you can, you can make a fee, an adjustment of the amount that's owed even if we pass this tonight?
Yes, I believe so.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just a question. I don't know if Grace or Jeff can answer it. What was the date of our decision on sharing the cost of sidewalk repairs? Do you remember? It was sometime in March?
Sometime in March.
Sometime in March. Okay. And what was the, the, when was it to go into effect? Was it any claim that done after that, any repair done after that? How do we determine when we started reimbursing?
So after the council decision, we stopped our program and didn't do any more repairs because we were going to reevaluate based on the new, the new threshold. So we didn't do any repairs after the council decision. So all this, all this work was done previous to that decision made.
So any decisions that you put off after that council meeting, when they come up again, they're, they are potentially eligible for this reimbursement?
So any sidewalk that we haven't repaired or done any work yet is eligible?
Okay. Thank you.
We created a hard stop, and I've been told it was February 27th, so thank you. A hard stop to the program, wiped the slate clean because, as you know, there were more changes than just, that the council made than just the cost-sharing component. There were also the type of defects in the sidewalk and the nature of the inspection program and that sort of thing. So we decided we'd just call a halt to everything. We sent letters to everybody that had pending letters from the city, letting them know we were going to restart in several months.
Okay. And can you go back to that slide that talked about the 2016, 2017 sidewalk repair result, project results? I think it was the one that said, that's it. So 96 were repaired. How many were scheduled at the time that we stopped?
So we had 50 more locations for, we, we had three task orders planned for this contract. The first two were completed. The third task order, we haven't started yet, so we stopped. And that's about 50 sidewalk locations.
Five oh?
Five oh, yes.
Five, 50 more?
Yeah.
Okay.
In that task order. We still have a very long list that we haven't, yeah.
All right. And so the 96 locations that were repaired, that was what, fiscal year, 2016, 2017?
Correct.
So between July 1st of last year and February 27th, 96 locations?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Grokot?
I wanted to find out, because we had a couple of people who are saying, you know, "We've received bills and we didn't agree with it," or whatever. So what is the process if, you know, a resident ends up at loggerheads with staff? Because they could, you know, I suppose they could discuss it. Staff could come back with, "Well, now, this is what you owe." And the homeowner could still feel like, "Well, that's not justice to me. I'm, I still feel like I'm paying more than I ought to," or whatever, have a contest. So what's the process to resolve that kind of thing?
So if there's a question about the quantity, we'll show the quantity numbers, the square footage. We have that information. And if it's a question about the cost, each square feet has a unit cost, so it's just basically math. So we would show the property owner that number of square foot repaired, and you can really go out and measure that. Newly repaired concrete is very different from old concrete. And the, the price for square foot is a, is a bid document. We bid it out, so it's a public document that you can pull off our website, so it's consistent throughout.
And is it always obvious how much sidewalk needs to be repaired? Is there ever a question about, "Oh, you guys went, you know, three squares and you only needed to do one or two," or, you know, "I'm just making something up," but, you know, right?
And that's why we, before we do the repair, we give an estimate as well of so many square feet, and this is how much money, it's, how much it's going to cost. And so for this case, I'm going to compare the estimate with the actual and see how far, or was it something that came up when the contractor was out there and it wasn't part of the estimate? I'm not sure what the case may be here, but there is, we do keep track. There is a logic, and the homeowner had a cost estimate before the repair. And then there was another letter confirming what the cost is after repair. Oh, actually, two invoices after repair. So there is a lengthy time where they can contest or have a conversation with staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we adopt Resolution 2017 dash...
Forty-eight.
Fourteen?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. Boy, my hearing's going. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the placement of sidewalk repair charges on the property tax roll pursuant to Section 12.04.030 of the San Carlos Municipal Code.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Moved in second. A discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisley.
Yes. All right. We'll move on to Item 9B, consideration of the following actions for the Hilton Garden Inn Hotel project at 1091 Industrial Road, APN 046-151-060. Mr. Sade?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I will begin by introducing Lisa Costa-Sanders, who's the project manager, and we will share the presentation this evening. I will get up in a little bit and talk about the height and design of the building, and then Lisa will close the presentation. The applicant is here, their architect is here, and they are prepared to make a presentation as well. And with that, I'd like to introduce Lisa Costa-Sanders.
Good evening, Councilmembers. As introduced, Lisa Costa-Sanders, principal planner. The item before you is, whoa, that's sensitive. Get me back, sorry.
I seem not the only one who doesn't know how to do this stuff.
Okay. The site, the subject site's located at 1091 Industrial Road. That's at the corner of Industrial and Britton Avenue. It's a 1.6 acre lot, has an existing 40,000 square foot, two-story commercial building. It is located right at the Britton 101 off-ramp. The current zoning for the site is commercial industrial and has the same general plan and zoning designation. The applicant is proposing to construct a new 162-room hotel with an attached above-grade parking structure. The requested entitlements include a zoning map amendment and a plan development permit, design review, and approval of a transportation demand management plan. City prepared the appropriate SEQA document, which in this case was a mitigated negative declaration. Potential impacts that were identified included biological, cultural, geological, greenhouse gas emissions, hydrology and water quality. Those are really mostly during construction that those impacts would occur. All impacts are reduced to less than significant levels with the mitigation measures. A complete traffic study was also completed, and that evaluated the traffic with the project, reducing it from the existing traffic associated with the current commercial building, resulting in a net increase of 62 trips in the morning peak hours. All impacts are reduced to less than significant levels with the mitigation measures. A complete traffic study was also completed, and that evaluated the traffic with the project, reducing it from the existing traffic associated with the current commercial building, resulting in a net increase of 62 trips in the morning peak hours and 72 trips in the PM peak hour. There's no new significant traffic impacts identified as a result of this project from the traffic study. The applicant has agreed to donate land along Britton Avenue and Industrial Road to accommodate the city's future roadway improvement project. Based on recent appraised value of another acquisition, we estimate that to be valued at about $430,000 for that land that will be donated. And then Al's going to walk through the design details.
Thank you, Lisa. What I thought I would do is talk a little bit about building design and the height. And the building design was one of the things that the Planning Commission talked a great deal about. And it's one of the things that the city staff spent most time on with the architect and their design team over the last few months. Any good design, any good building design should reflect the context of its surroundings. And what we're seeing in the industrial road corridor between Industrial and 101 is that more of the buildings, most of the newer buildings are contemporary or modern in nature. And that's the direction that these buildings are going. In your mind, you can remember the Circle Star Building to the south. This is the Windy Hill project. It's about 87 feet or 97 to the very top of the building. And this is the Palo Alto Medical Facility, which is about 84 feet. The proposal is for about 80 feet to the top of the parapet and 84 to the top of the tower, which is located in this area here. As you can see from these buildings, they have some context with each other. For instance, if you look at the Windy Hill building, you'll see that it's contemporary, it's commercial in nature, there's large expanses of glass and horizontal elements to the building that break up the mass of the building. And there's a lot of similarity. As I noted earlier, good building design should reflect its surroundings. In this hotel building design, you'll see some similarities and reflections in the design here. For instance, if you look at some of these vertical elements here, you'll note the similar vertical elements, similar colors, the reflective glass. And if you look at the Palo Alto Medical Facility as well, you'll notice that the pattern of the windows and some of these vertical elements that break up the building are similar to what you see at the Hilton building there. So this building really does reflect what's happening out in the industrial corridor. And also in terms of the height, this building wouldn't be an anomaly. It would be, again, a reflection of what's occurring in this corridor and what's already been approved. This is the elevation, as you see it, from looking north on Industrial at Britton Avenue. And one of the things that you'll note is it's a rectangular site, as you saw earlier on the site plan. And so one of the elements, the reason that this building has to be so tall is to get the number of rooms into this building to make it an economically feasible building. And so with staff and the architect, one of the things that we worked very hard on is to break up the mass of the building. And the way that was done is a number of different things were done. You can see that there's a texture to the exterior of the building, almost like a fabric. It's very fine-grained, or some would say in the architectural world, granular in nature. You have lots of windows and the mullions, and there's things that radiate out from the building to break up the mass of the building to make it look more horizontal. Quite frankly, one of the things that staff was most concerned about when we were working through the design on this building is the parking garage. And on the parking garage, this is looking now to the south corner of the building, we worked very closely with the architect to select a material that would break up the mass of the building, that would look good, a high-quality material, and to soften it with some of the landscaping there. And this is the elevation, if you're getting off the freeway at Britton Avenue, going to the west. And so if you take a closer look at the building, one of the things that the Planning Commission focused on, in addition to the height of the building, was the design. And design, architectural design, is somewhat subjective in nature. Sometimes you like it, sometimes you don't. But in terms of good design and how this was approached, in terms of breaking up the mass of the building and adding interest, is you'll see a number of different planes. You'll see a lot of light and shadow on the building. You'll see different textures that are used in the various material elements that come away from the building. These elements radiate away from the building, adding to the horizontal nature of the building. There's also a parapet that adds some interest here at the top of the building. And so all these things add to the fabric of the building and to make it a rich and good design and break up the mass. And again, as you see here, there's a number of different planes that break up the mass and height of the building and make it look lower than it really is. For instance, again, these things radiate away from the building. You have some of these material changes, the mullions, and even the windows vary in terms of the number of windows across the facade. And you see that, again, there's different planes breaking up the mass of the building. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about the design, and we can certainly talk about that in more detail if you like later. Lisa?
Thank you. So focusing on the items before the City Council tonight, one is that zoning ordinance amendment. And the request is to rezone the site from general commercial industrial to a planned development zone. The project does comply with all of the development standards in the zoning code except for the ones listed here, and that is the height. The request is to exceed the maximum 50-foot height limit with a new 80-foot tall building to the top of the parapet and 84 feet to top a tower. The next item relates to the creek setback. The city's standard is a 25-foot setback from top of creek bank. The applicant is requesting that be reduced to 10 feet. If you noted out there at the site right now, it's very somewhere from, I think, zero to about three feet. So this is an improvement over the existing condition. Floor area increased from the 2.0 standard in the code to 2.46, and that's really to accommodate that above-grade parking structure. And then signage, the maximum signage for this building would be 150 feet per code. But reviewing the signage with the applicant, they're requesting up to 360 square feet. That would be combined with the building signage as well as a monument sign at the Going over the outreach, the mitigated negative declaration was circulated September through October. We did not receive any comments during that time. The applicant mailed information to property owners and occupants within 500 feet of the site, also reached out to the Greater East Side Neighborhood Board, and the applicant did not receive any public input. Staff mailed and published notice on three different occasions, and staff did receive one public comment, and that was attached to your packet. The comments included a request for the hotel to provide incentives for public transit, noted the need for affordable housing, asked about the provision of community benefits, and also requests for sustainable measures. A lot of those items were addressed at the Planning Commission meeting. And if you noted in the design review certificate, the applicant did agree to go above and beyond on several of those measures at that Planning Commission meeting. So back to Planning Commission action. On May 15th, the Commission did recommend that the City Council approve the mitigated negative declaration. Planning Commission also recommends the City Council adopt the Plan Development Zoning Amendment and approve the development plan. And the Planning Commission took action on the Design Review Certificate and the Transportation Demand Management Plan. So as I indicated, you have two actions before you. One, the first would be adopt a resolution for the mitigated negative declaration associated mitigated monitoring and reporting plan. And the second would be to introduce the ordinance amending the zoning map to change the site from GCI to the planned development. Be happy to try to answer any of your questions, and the applicant is also here this evening.
Thank you, Lisa. Does the applicant, you don't have to say, you don't have to speak. Do you want to say something?
I'm going to leave a little slide.
About how long? 10 minutes or?
Maybe two or three.
That'd be great. Come on up.
I just want to word your names just about right again.
Don't tell me, because I'm taping it.
I know.
I don't want to know. Otherwise, we may not approve.
I'm keeping a secret promise.
That'd be a deal breaker.
Thank you, Lisa. Now, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name's Cole Strommam. I'm the Development Manager for Barry Swenson Builder. I've been the lead on the project since we purchased the property in early 2015. And I'd like to introduce my development team that is here tonight to answer any of your questions or comments. First, from Barry Swenson Builder, we have Bill Ryan, our Senior Vice President, Ron Kotay, our Senior Vice President of Construction, our partner on the project, Kevin Kiefer with Huntington Hotel Group, and our architect, Scott McGill with ACRM Architects. And now I'd like to bring up Bill Ryan to talk a little bit about the history and evolution of the project.
Hi, my name is Bill Ryan, and I'm going to walk you through a few slides here, some of which you've already seen before. Al and Lisa did a great job of presenting here. What we're proposing is 162-room hotel. These are some of the specifics. Couple of things that didn't maybe get pointed out were the guest courtesy shuttle, which is an important part of the project. We want to try to create a connection with the downtown and also with the airport. This is the site here. This is the current condition of the property. This is a slide I wanted to spend a little time on. This is, kind of shows an evolution of how we started, what we originally proposed, and where we are today. You start with the slide, or the rendering on the upper left. The second one that we proposed is below that. The third is below that. And then you move up to the upper right. If you start with the upper left, what you see there is a more typical suburban hotel. If you look at what's being done in our neighboring cities, just driving up here today, we passed by the hotel in Redwood City on the east side of the freeway. It's Residence Inn, or Courtyard, I'm sorry. And then there's a new hotel that's about 90% complete, which is in Redwood Shores area. Both of these are within a few miles of this particular site. And I would say that they would look very similar to that if you look at them. The one that's south of us is built up in a podium. It's got a lot of the same kind of articulation on the top of the building. The building that's in Redwood Shores, you see it from the side, so it almost looks like that from the side, that kind of ironically. But we had spent a lot of time with your staff. Apparently, the staff had had a lot of input from you, and it filtered back down to us. And through the process, we were driven to a different design. So we started, it started to evolve again, using, breaking, the comments that we got were that it needed to be broken up a bit more, and you saw that in the second rendition. We went to the third rendition there, you're starting to see even more of an evolution to a, much more sophisticated design, less suburban, more urban. The materials are much more rich and more what you would see in a typical urban setting. So I think the design has evolved. It's something that we're very proud of, and we appreciate all the help that we had from your staff. You know, one way to look at it again, if you, and it struck me on one of the slides that Al put up today. If you look at the top corner of that building, is what he did is he cut out a piece to look at it. When I look at that corner, I could see that same corner on a 20-story or 30-story building. You wouldn't necessarily see that in our first rendition. That really looks like a typical suburban building. So again, we're happy with the way it evolved. We think it's going to be something the city can be proud of. It's something certainly we're proud of, and we're hoping for your support today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Questions, Mr. Collins?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ryan, can you come back up a second here?
Sorry.
Just got to...
No, no, no.
I know the score. I got a text from my wife, but anyway. But I won't tell you. Can you go back to that slide that had, you know, talked about the restaurant, the lobby bar, blah, blah, blah? Yep, that one. Okay. Tell me about the meeting facilities. Would they be big enough for our service clubs?
Yes, they will be. We have two meetings, meeting rooms, is that correct? Or can one of you guys speak? Four? Okay.
I don't want to speak on behalf of the service clubs. I don't belong to any of them. I'm just curious if they wanted to meet there. You know, they have anywhere from 30 to 50 members. I don't know how many come to lunch, but...
Yes, they're definitely open to the public as well as to the guests.
Would they have food service, because they usually meet for lunch?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's good. All right. I think a lot of my other questions were answered by your presentation, and thank you for that. I think my next question is for Al. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Nice presentation. Al, in early in the presentation, you mentioned that they were, no, I'm sorry, Lisa, you mentioned that there was $400 and something thousand being contributed toward future road improvements. What sort of road improvements are we looking at or anticipating?
I'm actually, I'm Jay.
Yeah, maybe Jay should answer it.
It's a land contribution, not a dollar.
Right, it's a land contribution, right. And my question is, what are you thinking about doing with that land? Are we going to widen the street? What are we going to do there?
Right. So we currently, in our traffic impact fee program, we have a project that's been identified to widen the intersection of Britton and Industrial, adding turn lanes. And so this right-of-way dedication will help us accomplish that. We're not ready to do that project yet, but as other projects come in and contribute to the traffic impact fee, then we'll be able to put the money together to actually build the work.
And does that include the roadway coming from all directions eventually?
It's, the project right now has widening that's required on the northbound and southbound legs and the eastbound leg. Right now, it doesn't include any widening on the westbound, but we're holding back on that corner for the, or we're getting the property for the ability to have that right turn lane to go north on Industrial Road.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. I apologize, I had to step out if these were touched on while I was out. Roughly, when the hotel is built and it is experiencing reasonable occupancy levels, what amount of hotel occupancy tax does the city expect to earn from this?
So we've estimated the first year of occupancy, the transient occupancy tax would be $916,000. There's also an increase in property tax of $69,000, increase in business registration tax of $1,600. So there are some loss in tax right now, taken into consideration for the existing use, but the net first year would be $944,975.
Or for those of us who like to round, roughly a million dollars.
Roughly a million, yes.
Thank you. And the, my understanding from conversations I've had with staff in the past is that this particular site had some environmental issues that had to be mediated. Could you talk a little bit more, or enlighten me a little bit more about what was involved with that and basically what the benefit is that we're getting out of this project being approved and that mediation occurring?
The applicant's been replied with a question.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, as you know, the majority of the property in that vicinity is, has environmental issues due to the historical uses. We are planning on cleaning up the site to a certain extent and then adding a vapor barrier that would protect the people that occupy the hotel as well as anyone else who might be walking by, so.
And essentially, that's, it's improving the overall environmental quality as a result of doing that.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions, believe it or not. So Lisa, you had the net trips, 62 and 72. What are the gross trips? Because you said that's the increase. So what are the gross trips? And what's the grade on, if there's an A, B, C, D, E, F on the corner? Or did they do that?
They absolutely did that. And Mark Spencer with W Trans is here, and he could speak to the total volume. Do you have that page handy?
Great.
My name is Mark Spencer, Principal Traffic Engineer with W Trans. We prepared the traffic report on behalf of the city for this project. Your first question regarding trip generation for the project and gross versus net trips. There's Table 13, which is in our traffic study, removing trips that are there... 13, which is in our traffic study. Removing trips that are there previously, we're taking away in the morning 47 trips, and in the afternoon 41, and then we're adding about 110 to 112 trips due to the hotel. So that's how you net out at 62 positive and 72 positive.
And did you give it a grade? Is there a grade on the corner?
Yes. Now, with the project, when you add that to existing trips, specifically, you're asking for which corner. Now, I've got eight intersections that we analyzed.
Is there any Fs?
No, there's no Fs. The worst that we'd get to is a, is a D situation when you add the project.
Okay.
And then cumulatively, you know, when we look 25 years down, hence, we do wind up with one F at Whipple and Veterans, which would happen without the project as well.
I won't be here. Don't worry about it. But thank you very much, though. I appreciate the information. Thank you. Appreciate it. The other question I had is the creek, Lisa. You said it's like three feet now, or one to three feet. If, if something happened to that creek and all of a sudden we have the, you know, Johnstown flood, it would go, I guess it would go into the, the parking garage?
Well, the building is set back 10 feet, and there's a landscape area there. So it would over into, and then, yes, I guess it could go into the parking structure at that level.
Parking structure, it wouldn't be the actual building itself.
That's correct.
Okay. And last, a monument sign, that I think means a big sign on the corner or something. I see no sign...
It could be a pole sign.
I see no signs here, so that's why I'm asking where and how.
Right, they'll come in for the, to the sign program, but it would be a lower-level sign at the corner.
Okay, so it's no higher than...
I think the max it can be is eight feet.
Okay, fine. I was just wondering, because I didn't see any pictures, but you said it. Okay.
Yeah, so what you're approving is the max square footage and not the signage itself.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Grocott?
Question, Bob just asked about the creeks act. The 25 feet would be typically to the building. I thought we had a setback for impervious surfaces and parking.
Correct. So currently, it's to maintain that riparian corridor, and so the current requirement is 25 feet from the top of creek bank to any impervious surface, pervious surface, yeah.
And so the 10 feet will be to the parking surface? Because it's, it looks to me like, looking at the site map, it's the parking lot that's on the side there, isn't it?
Yeah, there's some surface parking there, and then the parking...
So the 10 feet is...
The parking structure itself is about 25 feet, but there's some surface parking.
So the setback that you're talking about that's 10 feet will be to the surface parking?
It, they didn't, didn't measure to the top of creek bank on that drawing you're looking at. So the building itself will, is, it varies, but it's about 10 to 15 feet from the top of creek bank. They've measured from the property line is the 25 feet.
I'm sorry, I'm not getting clear on what we're talking about. The, the setback that's being met at 10 feet is for surface parking for, for building?
For the building.
For the building?
Correct.
Ouch.
From the top of creek bank, right. And it's a channelized creek currently, and right now, there's the parking lot that really runs right up to it. And so there's no really riparian condition today. So they're improving that by setting it back 10 feet and adding landscaping.
Okay. And then, the other question I have is, has to do with the, what's going on along industrial road, because we, you know, some years back rebuilt all of that. And I remember when we were going over that, there was talk about the sidewalks and, and, you know, how we handled the landscaping and so forth. Looks to me as though with this project, nothing's really changing, or is it, or?
There will be, maintained a sidewalk along the entire length of the property, and then there's also landscaping along the frontage.
But as far as the sidewalk itself goes, it'll be, it'll be as, as it is now?
I don't have that detail of the sidewalk. I believe it needs to be shifted due to the property dedication, the sidewalk. Yeah, the sidewalk will be shifted a bit with that new property dedication.
Shifted...
Inward towards the site.
Okay. To get more traffic lanes?
Correct.
Okay. But as far as the width of the sidewalk, it won't be any different than it is right now?
I don't have that detail.
Detail. Is one...
About the same, yeah, it'll be about the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
So a motion to close the public hearing and discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. All right, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2017 dash...
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Hilton Garden Inn Hotel Project at 1091 Industrial Road. I presume we're doing these one by one, or, or, okay.
I second. All right. Any discussion on this, on this item?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Somewhere in here, I just want to, I'm going to vote for this, but by my questions, I think you can tell where my concerns are. Number one, with the creek, and this isn't at all have to do with the applicant, it has more to do with, frankly, our city staff. And I'm disappointed to know that we're giving in on the creek the way we are, because some years back, we talked about the riparian corridors and trying to improve them, make sure we, trying to go from them being essentially drainage ditches back into being creeks, and giving the riparian corridor the right-of-way that it deserves, so that the creek can move and fluctuate with, with flow, that we can get back some of the wildlife that belongs there. And we're not, I don't see us doing any of that. I just see us marching forward with new projects and being happy that we got a few more feet. And myself, I'm not happy with that. I'm also not happy with the idea that, again, years back when we went over industrial road, there was some talk at the time about, you know, we're, we're doing all this talk about getting people out of their cars, getting them to walk, getting them to ride bikes, and you can't expect people to walk along a sidewalk right next to traffic the way that condition is. I remember even, shoot, 20 years ago, when I worked for a landscape architect in Boulder, Colorado, even back then, the idea was to get landscaping going between the traffic and the sidewalk, and move the sidewalk away from traffic, and also make the sidewalk wider and, and, you know, more, you know, beautify that, that type of arrangement. And I don't see anything going on in that regard with this project. There's nothing we can do about it. I don't want to put that on the applicant. But I think that's something that we need to look at and, and, you know, to try and beautify these areas and make them look nice and a place that's inviting for people to walk, if we're going to ask people to be pedestrians like that.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. It's motion and second. Any comments? Otherwise, I'll call the question. Okay, Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, there's a second item.
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number...
Fifteen twenty.
Fifteen twenty, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending the zoning map to change the site from general commercial slash industrial, GCI, zoning district, to planned development, PD, zoning district, and approving the associated planned development plan for the Hilton Garden Inn Hotel Project at 1091 Industrial Road, APN
Second. All right, moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight. All right, we'll move on to item 10, pardon me, 9C. Consideration of adopting resolution authorizing adjustments to the cost of services schedule user fees for fiscal year 1718. Item coming back to us.
You can never have enough user fees.
That's true. You can never have enough user fees. That's true.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services On May 8, the City Council was presented with the results from the citywide user fee study. A copy of that has been included as attachments 2 through 4 in your packet tonight. Comprehensive user fee study is not an annual requirement, but best practices suggest that a review be done every three to five years to recalibrate the total cost to provide service to the public. The fee schedule that's in place now, the one that was adopted last year, was developed based on the total cost to provide services at 2013 expense levels, with an annual CPI adjustment ranging from 2 to 2.9%. For comparison purposes, the construction cost index has risen 13% over that same timeframe. Over the past four years, the structure of our departments and the associated budget has evolved to enhance our services, which have increased costs over the CPI rate. For example, in the Planning Division, additional staffing and upgrades to existing positions have been added to manage the increasing demand and complexity of services related to the large-scale development going on. The total cost for services have also been recalibrated into the new hourly rates. This leaves a policy decision for council to determine the level of subsidy the city wants to provide for user fees. As this chart depicts, the difference between the full cost of service and the amount of fee charged for each service is the amount of subsidy that comes from other city resources. In our case, it comes from the general fund. Components of that full cost of service include the direct labor costs, so salaries and benefits for personnel specifically involved in the work performed; indirect labor costs, personnel expenses supporting the provision of services and activities, including supervision and line management; specific direct non-labor costs, so in this case contractor costs would be included in this category; allocated indirect non-labor costs, expenses other than labor for the departments involved. These costs are allocated across all services and not just into the direct fee categories; and finally, allocated indirect organization-wide overhead, expenses both labor and non-labor related, to general administrative services such as city council, city manager, city clerk, city attorney, administrative services, HR, finance, and building maintenance. So the city is currently recovering 75% of costs associated with providing service. The recommendations presented in your packet tonight would bring that cost recovery level to 88% or closer to industry standard. There are a total of 393 recommended fees. 55% of those were unchanged, reduced, or eliminated. 40% have increases, and 5% are new fees. The greatest proportion of changes fell in planning and public works, where greater demand and complexity of services have led to additional staffing needs and increased costs. Our fees do compare favorably to surrounding cities, and most recently, the City of Redwood City approved raising their cost recovery for planning fees from 70 to 98%. Our recommendation is from 65 to 94%. So there are many economic, political, and behavioral reasons why staff and policymakers do not recommend fees at 100% cost recovery, but here are the industry standards. So administrative fees are, standard is 100%, unless fees are capped by the state or waived by policy. Planning fees, standard is 75 to 100% cost recovery. Since these fees are paid by private development, agencies that set their cost recovery below 100% are typically agencies with blight that are trying to encourage more development via general fund subsidy. Public works engineering, it's 100% for all fees except for minor encroachment permits, which are typically subsidized to encourage compliance. Building would be at 100%, except for some of the smaller homeowner permits, where a small subsidy is allowed to encourage compliance. Example would be water heater permits. Police fees are at 100%, unless fees are capped by state or waived per policy. For our fee schedule, the false alarm fees, we waive the first call by policy. And parks and recreation, there's, there's no typical industry standard. Recovery can vary from as little as 20 to 100%. So if there are no changes made to the fee schedule tonight, the city's general fund would be providing 1.3 million in subsidies across all departments. The recommended fee schedule would increase our cost recovery rate from 75% to 88% and reduce that subsidy by 655,000. Reducing the subsidy would free up resources for other council initiatives. Since the Planning Division had the most changes with regard to residential plan checks, Al Savaian and Lisa Porras are here to discuss more specifics related to those fees.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. Lisa Porras, Principal Planner for the San Carlos Planning Division. And like Rebecca mentioned, based upon concerns that the City Council had during the hearing of May 8, I wanted to have a little bit more of your time to go over just three additional slides related to planning fees for single-family development, and then turn it over back to the council for further discussion and questions. See if I can make this work. Whoops. Maybe I need the other one. Sorry. Is it there? Can you, let's see. Sorry about that. Can you take me to the, to the slide, single-family fee calculation? Perfect, thank you. Sorry about that. So, so to begin with, I just wanted to recap how we calculate fees for single-family development. And although this is straightforward, I just wanted to take a moment to kind of share a little bit additional of additional information with the council that may not have been discussed at your, at the hearing of May 8. So the three primary factors determined to, for determining planning fees for single-family development include the average amount of time it takes for staff to process an application, the hourly rate itself, and then the percentage of cost recovery, which of course is a policy decision made by the City Council. So as you can see in this slide, the average amount of time it takes for staff to process the various types of applications associated with single-family development ranges, ranges from four to 30 hours. So this year, as part of this fee study, staff looked carefully at the current processing times and discovered that there were some efficiencies gained since the last fee study was updated in 2013. And as you can see, as denoted by the text in red, there were efficiencies gained in processing first-floor additions and accessory dwelling units. Next is the hourly rate itself, and as you can see, the rate increased from 168 to 188 per hour. And then the last factor, which is a subject of discussion, is the cost recovery rate currently set at 100%. If you look at page three of the staff report, it discusses the recovery rate that was adopted by the council in 2013, which basically set the fee, the cost recovery rate for single-family development at 50% for all of these fees, with one exception, and that was for new homes, which was set at 75% recovery rate. So the proposed fees, as shown in your attachment, are shown at 100, at a 100% cost recovery rate, based on the premise to move towards full cost recovery. So because the council expressed concerns about these fees, and whether they, whether or not they, and to the level that they may be presenting a burden on single-family homeowners, we wanted to gather additional data for the council to consider. So the two additional data sets include a cost comparison, looking at the same fees as compared to neighboring jurisdictions, and then we also reviewed the fees as a percentage of project cost or project valuation. So the cost comparison is actually provided on page three of your staff report, and as you can see, overall, the, overall, the fees are comparable to some of the neighboring cities that we evaluated, or that we looked at. And then just to note, three cities actually charge based upon the actual staff time it takes to process the application. So the number of hours in those cities, or the actual cost, can be more or less, depending upon how many hours are actually spent on those projects. Whereas in San Carlos, we have a max, we have a cap, basically, set for the number of hours it takes to process projects. So what this slide here, what we want to focus on is, is the, the next thing that we did was we calculated the overall number of projects and their associated valuations or project costs. So as you can see, in the first column, there are the, the figures for the various project valuations, whether you're doing a new home, or first floor, second floor addition. Again, these are average numbers. So what we did is we took the average cost for these homes, and then we looked at the average project cost and compared it to the planning fees. at the average project cost and compared it to the planning fees that we currently have, and then as compared to the proposed planning fees at 100% cost recovery. So in the case of new home, for example, the current fee represents 0.5% of the overall project cost, and that would increase to 0.7% should the fee be increased to full cost recovery levels. So those figures in the far right-hand column represent the increases of the fees as compared to the overall project cost. So as you can see, the fees themselves, just as standalone items, are nominal as compared to the overall cost to construct a project. And what I'd like to point out is what is not reflected in these numbers and not shown on this table, and what can vary greatly, are the additional costs it takes for a homeowner to hire an architect or a designer, perhaps the project engineer, or taking into consideration specific finishes, landscaping, and other amenities that may be associated with the overall development. So last, I wanted to share with the council what the implications would be if the council chose to set the cost recovery rate at a level that is lower than what is currently proposed. So first of all, a subsidy would be required in order to maintain current operating levels of the Planning Division. As discussed in the staff report, the overall staff time is devoted to our anticipated workload, but also staff has to be available to attend to the unanticipated workload, such as for new projects coming in that are larger and more complex, and also so that we're able to respond to City Council's strategic objectives and priorities. So depending upon where that cost recovery lies, that's the amount of subsidy that would be required. And one of the things that we wanted to point out in terms of, I think there were some questions about what happens if the cost recovery wasn't captured fully at 100%, and what would happen if there wasn't a subsidy provided to carry out the functions of the Planning Division. So we wanted to spend a little bit of time to kind of explain what that would mean. And basically, if the council chose not to provide a subsidy, then there would be less staff time devoted to carry out some of the other projects that fall upon our plate. And those include any state mandates, changes in state law related to various planning items. Of course, some of them that are currently on the table that we know and are dealing with are accessory dwelling units, changes by the FCC for wireless facilities, and cannabis, which we'll be discussing later this evening. Other areas that could be impacted include City Council priorities and strategic objectives, unanticipated projects, included lot splits in single-family homes, as well as a new directive by the council to work with professionals to update our tree protection ordinance. And again, as I mentioned, there are other unanticipated projects that require a high degree of staff time and focus at the senior level, which include the development of the Black Mountain site, as well as the L3 communication site. So again, should there be no subsidy coming from the general fund, there would essentially be less staff hours to go around, which would mean slower processing times for either, you know, for example, for processing regular planning applications such as single-family, or slowing down on perhaps the strategic objectives that are set by council. So we wanted to make sure to inform the council of this potential impact. But again, this is only if no subsidy is given. So that completes my portion of the presentation, and I'll turn it back over to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Orbert, do you have some questions?
Yes, I did, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I appreciate you pointing out that the table comparing us to other cities was on page 3, because for some reason I was unable to find it myself. So that was enough of a hint to get there. It looks to me, just from a cursory glance, that roughly speaking, we're probably, and it varies by particular line item, it seems like roughly speaking, we're on the higher end on the planning fees for single-family home-type projects. Is that staff's takeaway as well?
In terms of the recommended fees?
Yes.
Yeah, that's our takeaway, and that's typically what you see when a new fee schedule's adopted, because it's based on the most current -- remember that the other cities are going through the same process we are when they do their fees, very similar. So, you know, typically, the newest schedule is closer to the highest fees because it's based on the most current expenditures, and particularly in a time where we're seeing a lot of development, a lot of building activity, and cities are hiring more and more folks and contracting with more consultants to keep up with that demand, you know that expenditures are growing. So, you know, while we may be first today, I seriously doubt, you know, a year from now, we'll start to drop back to the average until we're actually below average, and then we'll redo our fee schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it?
Yes, that was it.
Wow.
I can make up some more.
No, no, I'm sorry. Sort of shocked. Mr. Grocott.
So it looks like at least... So with your chart here, Foster City is giving you a bill for actual time spent, and then Menlo Park and San Mateo require a deposit, this for planning. And then they must also give a bill and charge actually for the time hours spent. Is that correct? Okay. Is there any reason we're not doing that?
I don't have the history to share with you, but basically, the way that we have approached it in the past is to look at the overall amount of time it takes to process the average project. There are, you know, as you can imagine, several projects that take much more of staff time than the average, and then some projects actually take less. So our approach is to kind of even everything out by using an average to set the planning fee.
So is it open to us tonight to give direction to staff to change that policy and charge by the hour and justify your hours and give the client an invoice at the end of the...
I mean, that's...
This is your opportunity to conduct the public hearing and set the fee schedule for the cost of services from a policy standpoint on percentage, or if you want staff to look at a different strategy. I think one thing that I would just add to sometimes with these fee schedules, the hourly versus a set fee for services, sometimes certain members who apply might like the certainty that this is the fee, and others might prefer to have it because maybe they're more organized or their project's ready to go, that they want it to be hourly. So it's sort of a trade-off.
I know. I deal with that every day.
Okay.
So the answer, though, is we can ask to have that changed tonight, or we...
Yeah, if I may. I mean, my suggestion is if the council wants to go down that road, that you would ask for us to study that and bring that option back to you. I don't know that that's a change that we necessarily want to make on the fly. I mean, you really would be making it blind without any information from us as to what that would mean, kind of like the council's done in the past when they've had fee-related issues on garbage or sanitary sewer where they've wanted to make changes. They've asked us to study it and then to incorporate that into a presentation on next year's fee update. So that might be a suggestion on the way you might approach that.
Mr. Johnson?
So this is a question, I think, for Jeff, or maybe for Rebecca. Mr. City Manager, can I get your attention for a moment? So I raised some objections last time in the fact that staff seem to be proposing some, you know, 50% fee increases, 100% fee increases. And that was, to a large degree, based on the observation that in previous years, we've approved like 1% or 2% fee increases across the board. And so my question was kind of like, well, why is staff saying, hey, 1%, 2%, now 100% or now 70%? And so you've been referencing back to a fee schedule, a fee study that we did three years ago. And I apologize, I may not recall that. But at that time, did we do dramatic increases in fees, and did we take an approach of 100% cost recovery?
I think I've got the question.
Yeah. Every time we've done a major fee study, there's been significant changes throughout the schedule of fees, as you see now, with some going up significantly, some going down, you know, some staying the same, some going away, some new fees being created. I think your second part of your question really is in specific reference to the planning fees, where they're going up, where the cost recovery is jumping from 75% to 100%?
It's more a different question, which is just, or like, operationally, why do we approach this problem in this way? Is it that we don't know our day-to-day costs, and therefore, we have to go hire a consultant every three years to look at what our costs are? Because what I'm sort of questioning and objecting to is like, we have this idea, okay, let's get more cost recovery, and we're using a mechanism to this study in order to get there. But then, you know, you've referenced to a previous question, well, hey, when we do our fee study in a few years, we may see, you know, big changes again. Why is that? Why do we not know what it costs to do things on an annual basis and make an adjustment that way? Why do we need an outside consultant to tell us how to set our fees?
So the primary reason is the evolution and the continued evolution of state law in regards to fees. You know, what we're trying to do here, it isn't so much that we don't know our costs, it's that we want to create a legally defensible study of our costs. So, you know, we can't just point to the budget and say, well, you know, Rebecca and I sat down, we did some math, and we know that those are reasonable costs. What we need is a legally defending -- I mean, these are, you know, there are fees, particularly on the development, the private commercial development side, that, you know, sometime run into the millions of dollars. And so the potential liability to, you know, the city organization, the residents of San Carlos, you know, should those fees be challenged and the city lose a substantial case, you know, could be in the millions of dollars. So that's why cities, you know, tend to do it the way they do it now. And again, that's how the law has evolved. There are other areas where, you know, it's really been an evolution of council thinking. When I first joined the city, the council was very vocal about a goal to be at 100% cost recovery in Parks and Recreation. And over the years, that goal of the City Council has softened significantly, and, you know, they haven't really wanted to pursue that. And in fact, you yourself have led some changes on the council to dial some fees back and make them, you know, virtually no cost because of, you know, specific public benefit that the council identified. So there's a whole mix of reasons why things come out the way they do.
That makes more sense. One, just then, follow-up question. What is the legal shelf life of a fee study? So if we have fees, a study that says, hey, you can pay X amount, how long is that legally defensible?
So I'm the fee consultant on this project from NBS, and I couldn't say that there is a legal shelf life on any fee study. We have clients that have not touched their fees in 20 years, in 15 years. So all we have is the best management practice of what we see out there in terms of updating on a three- to five-year basis.
Okay. And so, but the fee study only references current costs. It doesn't project forward into what future costs may be.
Right. It takes a snapshot in time, and that's why it's done on a cyclical basis.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Orbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't want to disappoint you, so I was really struggling to come up with a couple more questions.
Please disappoint me.
Please disappoint me. Actually, before I ask the question, Jeff, isn't also part of the reason why we do the cost recovery studies once every few years that we don't have a system in place by choice to track, like, in the private sector, I've been in companies where we were engaged in development projects for another company, and everybody had to fill out time sheets every day about, you know, how many hours they spent doing this and minutes spent doing that. We don't have any system like that, correct?
That's correct, for the most part. You know, I think the planners, you know, when they're working on specific projects that where they're working against fees or tracking their hours, but, and we tend to look at it at the administrative level more in terms of funds rather than specific projects. So yeah, I mean, your overall analysis is correct.
Yeah. So part of the reason for doing the analysis is not only to have legal defensibility, but it's actually to sort of check periodically, how much time does it actually take to do various things? Because we don't have a real-time way of judging that. And by the way, I'm not proposing that we consider doing that, because every company I've ever worked at, when I've been in charge of administering those systems, that was one of the reasons why people used to hate me when I would show up in meetings, when we'd be there to talk about it. So a question I have is, part of the staff recommendation is that we adopt recommendations and then escalate them, also adopt the idea of escalating them at inflation, correct? That one, I have a little bit of a, help me out. I'm trying to understand the philosophical premise behind that, because a big part of what we're talking about here is, fine, we analyze how much it costs to do something, and then we have a political decision to make, depending on the facts and circumstances at any point in time, about perhaps what kinds of activities we want to encourage or discourage. Your example's about Parks and Rec, for example. That, to me, that second part, we can only do by taking action on it, right? If we adopt a formula that's kind of like, well, for however long the formula's in place, that's what's going to happen. So why do we want to not review this every couple of years?
So if I understand correctly, it's not an automatic, like, tonight's action would approve those future cost-of-living adjustments. So the fee schedule still comes back to you, and it has to come back to you every year.
And we could at that time say, we've made a policy decision that we want to make the planning fees cost recovery at 50% because all of a sudden, development has slumped, and we have to figure out a way to incentivize it.
Correct. Since the last time we did the fee study annually, as the fees have come back, the council has keyed in on some fees, block parties, picnic rentals, that kind of thing, where they've identified a policy reason in their mind why they wanted to subsidize fees to the community.
So in a sense, the escalating concept simply defines the floor, if you will, of the sort of status, if you maintain the status quo of what will happen. But each year, we get an opportunity to say yes or no on the status quo.
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. No discussion that I see here. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2017-.
50.
50, a resolution of the City Council of the city of San Carlos authorizing adjustments to the cost of services schedule, user fees for fiscal year 2017-18.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Collins, do you have a comment?
Just briefly, I want to congratulate and thank staff for an incredibly thorough report. All my questions were answered. That's why I asked none. So, great job.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm going to be opposing this this evening. I think that great work's been done, and I think I agree with the spirit of it, but I think the jump in fees year over year is too high. I would prefer to see it spread out over a number of years. You know, we had some folks here tonight who expressed some concern that, you know, one-person sidewalk is going to be subsidized, and then they didn't make the cut, and they see a very significant difference in the amount of they're going to have to cover, and I worry about a similar situation here. So I think that the cost recovery goals are good, but I would like to see them phased in more slowly.
Okay. Mr. Grocott?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Johnson, and primarily, what I'm looking at is two of the fees that have to do with single-family homes, and going from, for like a single-story from 718 to 1130, that's an additional $422. That's a 65% increase, one jump. And when we look at second-story additions, it's more than 100% increase. It's more than doubling the existing fee. And to me, that's unfair. And to me, that's, that's unfair. And staff can talk about where they are in the market relative to other cities, but because I'm in this business and I know what people in my business charge to do design work, even at $188 an hour, that's, that's high. And then they're, for like a second-story addition, with no real demarcation between, you know, how big is that second-story addition? We're talking 30 hours of time to review a project when you're looking at, in my estimation, you know, the regular planning things of height limits, setbacks, lot coverage, you know, with a residential design review committee application, you, you're also looking at materials, I suppose. But 30 hours to do all that work, that's, that's three and a half days full-time. That's a lot of time. And so I just think these, and those are the only ones I know about, so I can't speak to the others because I'm not, you know, I don't know about developer fees and, like, the applicants that just came in with the hotel and so forth, but because I know about this one, I'm very concerned about it, and I just can't support it.
Okay. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say that, that for me, no schedule of this complexity that tries to encompass all of the various types of activities that our citizens interact with City Hall on can ever be perfect. And I could certainly find things in here that, you know, I might tweak one way or another. I do think it's important, for me at least, to recognize that, that the areas that have been identified in the discussion that have the largest percentage increases also happen to be involved with the topic that's probably most on the minds of most people in San Carlos, which has to do with all the pace of development and activity in the city. And as we all know, from having commissioned or set up the commission that's looking at potentially making recommendations on revising our land use policies in that regard for single-family homes, you know, I suspect if I went back and looked at the reason for why less than 100% cost recovery was established by prior councils, it was probably because at the time, the pace of development was relatively low, and they were concerned about it falling even further, because we do want to see the community invest in itself and improve its housing stock and whatnot, you know, keep it current. We know for a fact that that was the case with the lot splits. I've talked to various former council members, and they said explicitly, that's why they chose to do that, that's why they chose to make changes to lot coverage ratio. That's not the world we live in today. There is a tremendous pace of activity going on in the community right now. I think that's good in many ways, but it is probably an appropriate time to think about saying that that kind of activity ought to pay its full share of the costs. And given that, I support staff's recommendation.
Okay. Any other things? It's not, Crystal?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. All right. Moving on. Number 10A, study session, discussion of permitting cannabis-related retail businesses in San Carlos.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Get the PowerPoint up here. All right, here we go. As you know, we had a study session on Prop 64 regulations and the implementation here in San Carlos a month or so ago, and the council gave us a lot of great direction at that time so that we could begin to work on our municipal code update to incorporate those changes before the end of the year when Prop 64 will begin to take effect. The council asked the staff to go back and do a little more legwork and, and reach out to the community, do a shape topic on the specific issue of retail cannabis, the one area where the council did not give us direction. So we've had the opportunity to do that, so we'll back up for just a second and just revisit a couple of brief things before we begin to move back forward. So again, the purposes of these new regulations, this goal and Prop 64 in general, can really be summarized here as, as talking about increased safety and regulation and control on the issue of cannabis and its personal use in California. And so that's what we're dealing with. Prop 64 statewide received 57%, 57% of the vote in favor. It was higher here in the county at 63%, and higher yet here in San Carlos was 65%. The Shape San Carlos poll indicated, and I should say it was, you know, it was to date the, the largest poll we've had on Shape San Carlos, there was a lot of interest in the topic. 77% of respondents were in favor of legalized cannabis, and 76% in favor of at least one retail business here in San Carlos. This obviously isn't a scientific poll, it's a community outreach and participation tool. And what the results really told me was that, you know, I think we can really count on the information we got from the vote, which obviously is a scientific tool here in San Carlos, to, to see that there was, you know, pretty significant interest on this, in support of this topic here in San Carlos. We asked a number of questions in the Shape San Carlos poll. In one area of the survey, we asked people about where they would and wouldn't like to see retail cannabis, in the downtown, only in the downtown, on El Camino, only in El Camino, east of El Camino, never east of El Camino, that kind of thing. And we weren't surprised to see from that particular question that we didn't really get a whole lot of data that really correlated on one location or not one location, it was pretty well all over the map. But what did stand out in that particular question was this notion of 1,000 feet or 600 feet, as the council had previously talked about, from residential homes. Prop 64 doesn't have that provision, it doesn't automatically restrict you from having a business right next to a neighborhood like this. So this would be, in our estimation, you know, other than regulating the, the number of locations, which, as you saw in the survey data, changed the support for, I think, one where at 76, two is about 65, 64%, and three locations, it falls just under 50%, I think it was 46, 48% in that range. But the 1,000 feet and the 600 feet were definitely and clearly important to the people who were in favor of, of retail cannabis in San Carlos. So revenue projections, these are questions that are, should be important to the council and the community. You know, what, what's in it for the community? Their significant amount of revenue that these businesses generate? We estimate that that would range from $400,000 to $650,000 per location in a normal size. And this will give you, this is just kind of rolled up for one dispensary, two dispensaries, or three dispensaries with fees, sales tax, and special tax of up to 10%, which most communities who are looking at this issue are considering. So here's where I think, you know, things kind of get interesting in terms of a policy discussion for the city council, because clearly Prop 64 gives you the ability to simply restrict this use right now, that's the way the law is written. You know, we don't believe that the law will exist like that for very long, we think local control will likely fade away as it does on these issues over just the next few years as Sacramento wraps their head around this and a lobby begins to develop. This will be a multi-billion dollar industry, as we've heard from the state, and large businesses will become players in Sacramento in terms of crafting legislation that will regulate this industry on into the future. You know, looking at it now, restricting business outside of residential zones is something you have the ability to do now, revoking permits under certain conditions is something you have the ability to do now, requiring additional security measures, you know, attracting for these limited permits, the best and most established businesses in this interest, industry, I think is a real advantage for the community and the council. You're really only going to have, you know, one shot at this. You know, once, you know, once the best businesses, you know, start to locate their businesses in communities, you know, they're not going to be building out everywhere like a Domino's Pizza, and you'll be, you know, but that doesn't mean in the future, as, as regulations are changed and these businesses do come in, that you won't have businesses coming in, it just means that the best ones will have already found a home around us. Again, you know, we're talking about retail, and, and we sent some staff, we offered the council the opportunity, we sent some staff last week down to San Jose. We have a couple folks here in the audience back here who's worked down in San Jose, as well as our consultants from, is it SCI here this evening, who can talk a little bit about that. But I think, you know, what we saw were businesses that, you know, were operated in, at a very high level with very strict security measures, actually tied directly into the San Jose Police Department with live video stream, so the, the control, the packaging control so that we kind of, they get it, the issues that were important to Mayor Grisilli about, you know, keeping these products when they reach the home out of the hands of unsuspecting children are very good. You know, I thought, I think about it as it was described to me as almost, you know, casino-level type security from beginning to end in the process. And if these businesses are allowed to come into San Carlos either now with council authorization or in the future with state authorization, you know, I mean, we really hope to be able to attract businesses that, you know, that do business the way in which we saw down in San Jose. So best practices here would require law enforcement access with investigation, inspection protocols, establishing employee badge requirements, live scans, fingerprinting for employees that work there, ensuring all the physical security of the facility and, you know, its parking area and all those things, regulating signage and advertisement, and align the medical and non-medical sales, which is something the state's working on right now, and focusing on those elements. So here's a couple of maps that really show you, here's the 600-foot buffer. As you could see, it's the, what color is that? Orange, dark orange, burnt orange? That's, the darker area would be the areas in which a cannabis retail business could potentially be located, because there are specific areas in here where retail is not allowed. So, and there's also, you know, provisions in the law that require, you know, if there's a childcare center, or a school, or any of those sensitive uses, that a buffer zone has to be created. So within this area, this isn't a guarantee that they could go anywhere in this area, there would still have to be a specific review based on the exact location that that business would be requesting to go, but this would be the only areas where they could be looking at going. And then here, it is a little bit wider at 1,000-foot buffer. So you could see, it's a relatively small portion of the city where any of these businesses could potentially locate. So with that, we have our consultants here, and we have some experts here as well to answer some of your questions, and while I don't think staff's expert on this particular topic, we're, we're learning as we go, we'd be happy to try to answer your questions as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malpe. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, could you put up that, oh, just put up the 1,000-foot buffer slide? Question I had is, and this is triggered in part by some questions or perspectives that came in by email over the last couple of days. These things are, these two maps are keyed based on distance away from residential areas. Do we have the authority to establish, I guess I will call it arbitrary rules that don't necessarily tie to a distance from a residential area? For example, could we say dispensaries are allowed, but only south of Britton Avenue and, and east of Old County Road? Or does it have to be tied to a distance from something?
No, I believe you would have the ability to express it in those terms in the code.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We got, and I don't know who can answer this, but at 5 o'clock today, it always happens on these things, we, we start getting emails, and some guy sent a report that said that in the states that had legalized marijuana, Colorado, Washington, that there was this big rise in blacks and Hispanics being arrested. It also said that the trend in minors was, showed significant increases in Colorado and Washington, although I will say, it also showed a rise in Vermont, which has not legalized it, where it has been legalized, and that, they also mentioned that the revenue projections were overestimated because they thought that the revenue was going to go to the special programs, and they ended up going into the general fund. And I haven't really had a chance to look at this report, I noticed it was also only sent to council members, it wasn't sent to staff. It really hasn't been a chance to, to really delve into it. But I'd just like to know if, I don't know if it's Greg or maybe the consultant, might have some ideas as to, you know, the validity of those claims, and if you've seen any alternate studies that, that might either confirm that or give us a different direction. So that would be, sorry to be so sort of inconsistent, but, you know, I just, I just read this before I came over to the council meeting.
Yes, and, and I've heard the same thing, and I've heard conflicting information as well, it's depending on where you're, who you're talking to. Jurisdictions in Oregon have reported no problems. I, I was on the phone today with San Jose Police, and they have like 16, 17 of these areas, and they're saying that they don't really have any crime driven by these dispensaries of marijuana, except for auto burglaries, which is not a factor of it being a marijuana store, it's just a factor of it being a business in a new parking lot. And yet I've heard in Oregon, I've heard in Colorado, a lot of bad experiences in Colorado, where they are attributing some, you know, quality of life and crime issues to the legalization of marijuana, so it's kind of both sides.
Yeah. I understand that, I don't know if you were one of the members of staff that went down and visited the San Jose.
Did not.
Facility? I'd be curious to know, you know, what the impressions were of anybody who went down there and visited that, and what they observed. I see Rebecca getting up.
So I was one of the four staff members that went down and visited, and I'll be honest, I, I didn't really know what to expect, I hadn't been to any of these before. From the outside, you wouldn't realize that it is a medical marijuana dispensary at all. It's very nondescript. The inside is very clean, it's very professional. Some of the consultants here could probably talk more about the details, but all the employees have to be live-scanned by the San Jose Police Department, they all wear badges with the police department badge on it. There's security, there's cameras that are, one room I think had seven cameras that has a live feed into San Jose PD that they can turn on at any point. And I, I could go on, I don't have the list in front of me, but.
That's, I was wondering about your impressions of, of what you saw, and, and that's what you've given me.
Yeah, it was a very clean, well-run business, a lot of science behind it, which was interesting.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Grokot?
I'm confused by the map that's up here in front of us, because it says area 1,000 feet from any residential zoning district, but when we get there along the El Camino and the, all along the south portion, and at the north portion, same thing, it looks like El Camino is being treated like it's some kind of wall.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it has to do with the fact that there's no, you're right, there's housing allowed there, but in most of that area, there's not housing that currently exists, so that's a good distinction. We had to represent it some way, and so it's just a visual representation, you know, the 1,000 feet or. You know, the 1,000 feet or if you put other geographic boundaries on it that are more significant would, will ultimately be specific to any location. You're not approving the map.
Okay. I have three speaker cards. Mr. Loris Humm. We try to limit your comments to a couple of minutes, please, sir. Thank you very much.
Mayor, council members. In the summary of the chief's San Carlos survey, the city staff have highlighted the fact that this particular question elicited more responses than any other topic ever posted and that the results showed strong, strong support for cannabis stores in, in San Carlos. That said, I think it's fair to question whether even a couple of hundred responses is really representative in town where normally we have thousands of votes in elections. A greater concern to me, however, is the fact that respondents may not have actually understood what was being asked. For example, there was a discussion about the survey on Nextdoor and in that discussion, about 20% of the people thought that this was about providing access to medicinal pot and not, not for recreational use. And one question I would ask for clarification is whether the visit in San Jose was to a medicinal dispensary or a site where recreational pot was made available. If we assume that this Nextdoor discussion is also a representative sample, then the strong support described in the staff report could easily evaporate into statistical noise, sorry, when, when people realize that this really is not about, not a matter of compassion, but really about getting high. And, and, you know, personally, I don't feel like the, the proposal brings a net positive value proposition to, to our city. If, if there are stores here, I do have concerns about how we decide where they're located. In particular, the survey that was, that we're seeing these images from showed five maps showing where, showing possible locations for these stores, so only in downtown and El Camino. It turns out that three of those five images essentially placed the stores in my neighborhood. 600 feet from residences, 1,000 feet from residences, and only east of El Camino are all in these side. And they're all essentially in the same location, given the appearance at least that the deck was being stacked in favor of placing these stores in my neighborhood. And, you know, that may or may not have been the intent, but if, even if I give the administrators the benefit of the doubt, it at least represents poor instrument design and, and complicates any attempt to meaningfully interpret those results. One point that was not mentioned earlier is that, you know, is, there were actually very similar numbers to, from respondents saying only downtown or only east of, only east of El Camino. I believe there were 68 responses saying only east of El Camino and 66 only in downtown. So a mere difference of, of two respondents in, in the survey. And so just to close, I'd like to add that, you know, if we do end up with pot shops in San Carlos, rather than saying they should be located east of El Camino, I'd like to suggest that we take a step further and say that they should be located east of 101, which would put them out of everybody's way and alleviate everybody's concerns about undesirable impacts. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Michael Doherty.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for your time. I may be that guy, Mr. Collins, who wrote that email. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. I just wanted to submit that I would, I'm not personally in favor of allowing retail establishments in San Carlos at this time and would request that the city consider pausing its decision to allow retail businesses for at least one year until a variety of things can be done. And it's been reflected in what I've heard here today. The consultant that we have here has heard conflicting information. Our city manager, I know their team does the best they can, but they're learning as they go. So there is still a lot of information to understand. At the end of the day, the state needs to complete a more comprehensive regulatory program for cannabis. City leadership and the administration should work with other cities and civic-related associations or things like the school district to understand the full public safety and public health implications of this decision. A number of folks that I've spoken to have not, didn't even know this item was on the agenda. These are parents and they were very shocked to hear this. The outreach that has been done, well, I'm sure in good faith, you know, was very limited. When we talk about the staff report, what does not get highlighted in the staff report was the fact that there were only 279 responses in this survey that was done. I think that reflects 1.4% of San Carlos voters. So you're not talking about a survey that really captured a wide swath of people, nor are you talking about a sample that is representative of the, the true city because all the advocates are obviously going to show up to that survey. So it's very one-dimensional. Additionally, I don't see any information in the staff report anywhere on the city website with respect to the public safety and public health implications of this decision, especially with respect to youth. I'll leave you with a couple of statistics. I'm almost running out of time here, but I think this is important. In Colorado, emergency marijuana, excuse me, emergency marijuana-related poison control costs in Colorado for the age group, ages 0 to 8, so an increase post-legislation, post-legalization of 208%. 0 to 8, 208% increase in marijuana-related poison control costs. All ages was a 108% increase. I submitted this letter to you all as a, as a citizen, to our elected officials, and appreciate your time. And I'll be submitting an update to the letter as I did catch one or two typos because I was in a hurry on my lunch break when I wrote this letter today. So thank you for your patience and for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Sean Cali Ray, I'm sorry if I said that wrong.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Sean Cali Ray, I'm a consultant for my own company. I'm a land use consultant, but was hired to come into the cannabis industry about four years ago. And so I come from a perspective of, of really a land use issue. I helped seven of the 16 collectives, dispensaries, whatever you may call them, in San Jose get their licenses. San Jose had a problem. They had 130 unlicensed, uncontrolled, unregulated collectives. They looked at this as a land use issue because it is a land use issue. Where do these places belong? And you can regulate them, you can control them, you can tax them. It is probably smarter to do it at the local level than have the state come in and do it. You could set 1,000-foot buffer, you can set, San Jose didn't have the luxury of 1,000-foot buffer. They have residential way too close to industrial. They've converted a lot of their industrial land to residential land and so they have a buffer of 150 feet from residential. They have 1,000 feet from churches. They have 1,000 feet from places of worship, 1,000 feet from schools, parks, daycare centers, 500 feet from rehabilitation centers. So you can set it up any way you really want based on a local land use issue. That's, that's really what it comes down to is, or you can create a moratorium. You have all these tools to do that. Campbell created a two-year moratorium because they're going to wait two years till they figure out. At that point, you do lose local control. Then it really will default to the state and what the state guidelines really are and you lose sort of your biggest power as a council, which is your local land use power. San Jose's Police Department does a great job and sort of the takeaway that I always tell folks when I speak about medical marijuana or recreational marijuana is that you can control it, you can regulate it, you can tax it. It's an industry like everything else. The conversation's really sort of beyond us as of November 9th of last year about Prop 64. It's, it's really how our city is going to move forward implementing this. And so, and so I'd encourage you to accept the staff report moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. The next card is David, I'm sorry, Bennett or Benetti? I'm not sure. Benetti? Wasn't sure.
So thank you, members of the council, for giving me this opportunity. I don't have any prepared remarks because I'm responding emotionally. I'm responding emotionally because I'm one of those parents that Mr. Doherty reached out to today. I had to wait for my wife to get home from work so that I could rush here, so I apologize for not listening to all the discussion. But I can say, this is not just another industry. Because this isn't something that I have to explain to my five and eight-year-old daughters that this city council decided to take this action. It's not a items. It's not expanding parking around town. It's something that I would have to explain to my daughters, that the council found for some reason, that because it was legal at the state, that it was right for San Carlos. And it is my opinion, as a citizen here and a resident for 10 years, that it is not right for San Carlos. And that if you have the power to choose, that you please at least choose to take the time to think about what is right for San Carlos. So that I don't have to explain to my daughters what happened here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item tonight? All right. This isn't a public hearing, so we don't have to close it. Okay.
We can close as we like.
No, that's okay. We're good. We're good. Another motion I don't need. All right, gentlemen. And again, just to make sure everybody understands, this is a study session, we're not voting on the item tonight specifically whether it's going to be in or out. Right, Mr. Rubens? So again, just want to make sure everybody understands, this is not the final, final here. Okay? Mr. Collins.
I don't have a lot, a lot to say other than I want to thank the gentleman who spoke and, and if anybody's watching at home who wrote emails to us regarding their concerns, as Mayor said, this is a study session, we're not, I hope we're not rushing into anything. You know, this is a statewide initiative that was passed. Over 65% of our residents voted for it, so it, it didn't happen in secret. But we do have to deal with it. We're going to have, whether or not we do anything won't change the fact that it's, you know, that the state, the state's passed it and we have to figure out how we're going to respond. And that could involve no retail outlets. That might mean that there will be some in Redwood City and Belmont. We just have to decide, you know, how we're going to move forward. So every comment is appreciated. I, I for one have not made up my mind as to whether or not we have one or more or none. I need more input. And I think we're going to get that. So with that, I'll yield to the rest of my colleagues.
Mr. Grokot.
So number one, I appreciate the, especially the last speaker and, you know, to speak with such emotion and he admitted ahead of time he was going to do that. But it just shows me the deep concern people have. The only other folks I've talked to about this are, you know, the folks I talk to every morning at coffee and the response I get is, you know, a chuckle and a laugh and they can't believe that San Carlos is even considering this. But that's about as far as it goes. It's not taken as seriously as, as these two gentlemen brought it to us tonight and I appreciate that. I'm really struggling with this because I know, you know, from history, you try to squash something and it really doesn't work. When you look at, you know, prohibition in this country, that didn't work. It just went, made things go underground, but the activity still happened. But on the other hand, I see legalize, I see what the state did, legalizing marijuana as just another degradation in our society that I am just, it just, I don't like seeing this happen to my country, let alone my city. That all said, when I look at this map and I look at the 1,000 feet, I think to myself, 1,000 feet, that's less than a quarter mile. There's guys that can run a quarter mile in less than 60 seconds. Just to, you know, I was trying to grab, get a grasp in my mind of what, what that means, 1,000 feet. It's not very far. And you can see on this map here that it's from Terminal to Branston is a little more than 1,000 feet. So again, it's just, it's just not very far. I think if we're going to, my comments to staff is if we're going to look at this and seriously consider permitting, rather than say, oh, we're going to keep it 1,000 feet from residential or whatever, I, I think my approach would be more to, to say, let's only allow it in places where it's very, very visible, for good reason, because if there is any criminal activity that happens, it's very visible, it's right there. So I would look at places like along the El Camino or actually on Laurel Street in the downtown, as strange as that might sound. But, you know, we, we've had a smoke shop downtown on Laurel Street before. It got moved for different reasons over to El Camino. You know, we've got a couple of bars on Laurel Street. I think some people hate those and some people obviously go to those. But that, that's kind of where I'm coming at it from is if we're going to do it, then put it someplace where it's, it's more visible. Don't hide it away in, you know, the industrial area somewhere where it's more difficult for the police to monitor and check on it and so forth. Otherwise, I, personally, I, I would rather go with a moratorium of a year and see how, how it pans out for other cities.
Mr. Johnson.
So we, we had a discussion about this a few weeks ago. I've been thinking about it quite a bit. I think I'm still in the same place where I was a couple of weeks ago, which is, you know, really our, our power here is, is pretty narrow. You know, marijuana consumption will be illegal in the state of California, people will consume marijuana in, in San Carlos. It's really a question of whether or not to have retail or not. And, and in some ways, it's even more narrowly defined. It's about, should we have retail right now or should we wait and see? There's, there's always been something that's, that sort of doesn't compute for me in the way in which this is presented and discussed about it because on the one hand, the staff and, you know, our police chief says, well, we're going to keep it away from everything, it's going to be 1,000 feet away and, you know, it's going to be highly regulated and there's going to be security cameras and badges and all this stuff and, you know, and then on the other hand, but it's fine to have in the community. So, you know, you raise all these concerns that, hey, we need to have special attention, lots of regulation and all this stuff. And then on the other hand, you say, but then we should add it. And for me, I think there's no harm to, to the city of San Carlos and saying, let's wait a few years and see how this plays out in other communities. We are, we are not trying to be a marijuana retail destination. There are other communities in the Bay Area that see huge potential upside for their cities in doing that. We are not one of them. And so from my perspective, I think there's going to be a lot of changes in regulations. I think there's going to be a lot of changes in the, in the business, community consolidation of industries, you know, different companies are going to try to do this in different ways. And it just doesn't, I don't, I don't understand what the advantage is to us in being there right at the beginning and why not wait a couple of years? If indeed this is totally benign and has no, you know, detectable impacts on any negative quality of life in any other city in the Bay Area, then fine. Or if the state imposes it upon us and we have no choice, then fine. And, you know, and I suspect that someday there will be retail marijuana in, in San Carlos, but it just doesn't seem wise to me, given the nature of our community and given that we have the choice to be, to be there on day one. I just don't see an advantage to that.
Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Malpe, would you please put up your Proposition 64 vote slide, please? Thank you. I've actually been very interested in this discussion and all of the, the comments that have been emailed to us and conversations I've had with people on the street and whatnot about this topic and even hearing comments from the dais. Interest, the thing that I find most striking is the vast majority of the comments actually have nothing to do with the issue before us about whether or not we allow retail sales of marijuana in San Carlos. If you listen to them carefully, what it really is, is people saying, I'm not sure that marijuana should have been legalized. That's really what it comes down to, if you listen to the words really carefully. And I fully respect that. You can see from this slide here that 43% of the citizens of California said, I don't think it should be legalized. On the other hand, what you also see is that 57% of them said, yeah, I'm okay with that. And when I look at San Carlos, 65- And when I look at San Carlos, 65% of them said that they were okay with that. Now, I don't know everybody in San Carlos, but I've knocked on a lot of doors here, and I've talked to a lot of people in the 20-some-odd years that I've lived here. And one of the things that I've always been impressed by about our community, we often talk about how neighborly we are, and how tight we are as a community, and that's all true. But one of the other things that I've always been very impressed by, is, by and large, this is actually a pretty reasonable community. It's a pretty thoughtful community. We, you know, we have people who are kind of out there on the extremes, but in general, most people are, well, you know, let me sort of weigh this against that, and think things through, and they're reasonable in their decisions. Reasonable people, reasonable people who carefully weigh stuff, including the impacts and consequences of, once you legalize something, hey, it's probably going to happen to be sold in various places, including in my community. 65% of them said, I'm okay with that. They didn't necessarily say that, I want to see a pot store open up next to me, but then again, most people don't want to have stores of any kind opening up next to their homes. That's why we have zoning areas and land use restrictions. So, you know, I have to say that, from a personal point of view, I'm not going to lose any sleep, regardless of what the council does here. I just really hope that we honor and respect the people that we say we represent, and actually realize what it is that they've told us, and what they've likely told us, given how reasonable and thoughtful they typically are, in making our decisions, and, you know, move forward from there. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Yeah, just another comment. You know, I said I hadn't made up my mind, and I still haven't, but I do think, partially in response to your comment, Cameron, is that the sooner we act and make a decision, the more local control we have. It's important, I think, for us to have a framework, and we need to do that, I believe, sooner or later. As Mark said, 65% of the people in this town did vote for this. So I think it's important that we do have a framework, that we establish the, you know, our position that, so that we can have more local control. And if we're going to do it, there are, you know, there are good vendors and bad vendors, and we want to make sure that we have access to the ones that really know what they're doing. So I think it's important that we, you know, we, again, respect the vote, proceed deliberately, and make sure that, whatever decision we do make, that we're making it, you know, clear-headed and clear-eyed.
So, the last discussion we had, I indicated that I was, had no problem with distribution, cultivation, all the other ancillary items that came along with this. I still have a problem with the retail. It's not like anybody has to drive 50 miles if they want to buy marijuana, because it'll be in San Mateo, it'll be in Redwood City. I don't know whether it'll be in Belmont, but it's not going to be very far from us. You know, make no mistake, that the reason things get put on ballots, in a lot of ways, are because of money. I can, I shouldn't say I guarantee, but it'd be interesting to see who the folks that donated to the statewide initiative, not locally, obviously, we didn't have an account locally. There's a lot of money here, involved in this whole industry. And there's plenty of money to go around. I know it's difficult to walk away from perhaps $800,000 for our city, but we are not broke, and at least this day. And we have other ancillary items coming in, including the hotel we just approved tonight, as well as a car dealership and some other stuff. I just can't get my head or arms or anything around the retail side of it. We're one small little place here, of less than 30,000 people. I can't believe that there's going to be pitchforks and fire things coming out of the woodwork, because we don't have a retail shop in San Carlos. Someone has to drive somewhere. I do, you know, numbers can be manipulated. I've used them all my life. 65% voted in favor of legalizing it, and I don't doubt any of the people that voted for that believe that. The devil is always in the details. What does that really mean? It never, that question wasn't asked, what kind of detail it is. So in my opinion, like I said, I'm agreeing with Mr. Johnson. I'd say at least a year moratorium on the retail, but I think we should move forward in the other areas. So, Mr. Malpe, how do you want to, how are we going to sort of give you direction?
Well, I mean, I think you have. I think you've given us very good direction tonight. This is just a study session item, so it doesn't require any sort of a vote or anything, and we've just been keeping tally of the comments. So we'll continue to be working on the other regulations that we've gotten direction from. We'll table this discussion, and just continue to monitor the situation at the state level, and what we're hearing. If any major changes start to occur in the area of retail, we'll come back to you, so you have the latest and greatest, and can make the best decision based on the newest legal changes on the issue. And we should be back to you. I think we're planning on coming back in early mid-fall, maybe it's mid to late fall, actually. I think it's November with the regulations.
I was going to say, because we have a deadline.
We have a deadline. You know, we need to have, we need to have whatever regulations are going to exist on this topic in place by January 1st, or the state's regulations will just roll over us.
Right. Well, I think that, I mean, in my opinion, I think we should possibly have a, possibly even another study session, even between now and November, if people want to have it. And with more information possibly given out about specifics, and again, certainly, I know we did the best we could with getting outreach and so on on this, and the shape vote and everything else. However, we can get more, if we can get more information out to more people, I think that would be a great idea. So.
All right. What else do we have?
Can I just ask one more question? Could we potentially set up sort of a town hall type of situation, where we invite the public to come to one of our meetings and give their input? I'm sure there are more people that feel like these gentlemen feel, and who are, who feel just the opposite. And I, I think I said this at the beginning, I'd like to hear from more of those people. I think we properly notice it, tell them we're going to have a, you know, sort of a full-on discussion about it. This is our community. It's an important topic, and I would like to see that outreach. I know that we had Shape San Carlos, and we've had surveys and that sort of thing. But if it's being talked on, talked about on Nextdoor, and there's misinformation, and I, and I'll tell you, I'm not fond of Nextdoor at all. But if the misinformation is out there on Nextdoor, and we have an opportunity to get the facts out in a public forum, I think we ought to at least take a look at that.
Okay. So move on. Item 11, Council Communications and Announcements.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have the item 6I.
Oh, I apologize. You're right. I'm sorry. How could I forget?
Well, that's okay. I was willing to help out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for helping out. 6I, okay. And I'm sorry, you were the one who pulled it?
Yes, I was.
Go ahead.
I have a question for staff preparatory to making a suggestion on this, or proposal on this, see if the dais is interested. Jay, roughly speaking, if we were to augment the proposed staff request, which is roughly a million and a half dollars for road repair, right, including contingencies, am I reading the right one?
Yes.
Okay. If we were to augment that by a quarter of a million dollars, what would that, roughly speaking, do to the index that you've educated us on about the quality of our streets? What's the bang for the buck, kind of?
Let me state it this way. If you were to augment the project with another half million dollars, then I believe that we would be able to make a 1% increase. We would be on the upswing towards raising the PCI for this year. So in other words, we need to be able to spend close to 2 million in order to be able to have that increment start to go upward.
Okay, let me make sure I understand. So effectively, without such an increment, we will at best stay level?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I always admire a man who asks for more than he was offered, so the, here's the idea I want to broach for the council. You know, you've heard me talk about the fact that, in fact, I think you even mentioned this at our strategic planning session last Friday. We are building up a fair amount of financial reserves, because a number of the decisions that were made by this and prior councils were very smart, and they have increased efficiencies, and the local economy is doing well, and San Carlos is an attractive place to live and work, and lots of people are coming here and spending money. And at the same time, one of the things that pops up all the time, and I know I hear about it, I'm sure others of you do as well, is the quality of roads. And specifically, the fact that people would like to see that improved. And so it occurs to me, since we have this item coming in front of us, that maybe we ought to think about augmenting the money that Jay is investing in this. Personally, I would do it in a way where, rather than put the extra half million dollars into the road fund, because once we put that money in there, we can't get it out, and if it turns out that there's more money coming down from the state, then we're like, well, now what do we do? But I would, I would like to see us give Jay the authorization where, if he, at the end of the year, towards the end of the year, if he needs additional funds, it's there, out of the general fund, to augment the money that he's had to invest. So that's the idea, and I just wanted to bring it up and see what the reaction of my colleagues is.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Grokot? On this item, this is a lot of dollars. It's a very important topic for our community, and so I would just request that, especially given the hour, if it doesn't hurt the project at all, if we could just hold this item over to the next council meeting, and not have it on the consent calendar, and actually get a presentation from staff on both what Mr. Albert is suggesting, and just, you know, a typical staff report from Jay Walters.
All right. Mr. Johnson?
Didn't we just get a report on the, at the previous meeting, was it, on the pavement index?
Mm-hmm.
March. Okay. And so this is essentially a follow-on appropriation to that?
Essentially, it's this year's project that's based on all that pavement condition work that we did. And so here's where we're going to spend the money this year.
Okay. I mean, I'll just make a sort of broader reaction to Mark's comment, both the one he just made here, and then the one he made at the staff retreat about, you know, we have, the city is in a good financial position, and shouldn't we be spending money on things that improve the quality of life? I think that's a fine idea, but I wouldn't do it just to sort of improve the statistics. I think if you could identify, there is a road in specific need of repair that warrants, you know, going above and beyond what the staff is recommending, I think I could get behind that idea. But just saying, like, hey, let's spend more money to accelerate road construction kind of at large, I don't really feel a justification for that, independent of the staff's recommendation, which is whom I'm looking to. So my preference would be just to move this item forward tonight.
All right. Well, if you want to make a motion, Mr. Johnson? Go ahead.
Then I will move to adopt a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the 2017 pavement rehabilitation project C-9416-17, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with G. Bortoloto and Company Incorporated.
Your names are tough.
Sorry. My apologies. Of San Carlos in the amount of $1,398,882.39, appropriating $130,000 from the general capital fund, 25 to the project budget, C-9416, and authorizing the expenditure of a construction budget with contingencies in the amount of $1,548,882.39.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Moved in second. Discussion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Albert.
I am going to be voting against this, as you might imagine, because I think we actually should be looking at augmenting it. But I do certainly approve the idea of keeping the roads in at least as good condition as they are. I did want to react to the comment that, or the thesis that Cameron was proposing in his comments. If you think about it, we're on the verge of approving one and a half million dollars without having a specific list of projects of roads we're going to improve. And that's because the way we manage the road budget, the road repair budget, is by doing it through pavement index, and prioritizing it based on what roads fall where. So, you know, the majority is welcome to do it as they wish, but to me, that's why I put it in the context of managing it through improving the pavement index, because that's how we always do this.
If I might respectfully respond very briefly, you know, when Jay presented the pavement program in March, there was a map that accompanied it that said, these are the roads that staff is recommending that we pave. Seems totally reasonable to me. If there's an argument to be said that, like, hey, there are some roads in dire condition that are not represented here, that I also think is a reasonable thing to say. But short of that, I think you're just applying money in a way that it's unclear what exactly it would be spent for.
Well, respectfully.
Any other comments? If not, I'll call the question.
No, I'd like to respectfully reply.
We don't have enough time to reply. We're already at the rocket. You said your piece, you both said your pieces, you're on opposite sides of the issue.
I would like the minutes to deflect, that I object to what the mayor has just done.
Fine. Mr. Grokot?
I was just going to say, I'm willing to vote yes on this, but I still would like, with what Mark is saying, if, you know, give staff the opportunity to come back and say, yeah, if we had this much money, these are the roads we could do, and they could really improve things.
I know, I'm just waiting for it to go to 10:30, and I'm going to do that.
Yeah. So, and so you've got two people, and I'm just looking to see if we've got a third that would be interested in hearing that.
Okay. I'll make, I'll hear a motion to extend the meeting.
I move that we extend the meeting to 10:40, not that we'll need it, but.
All right. All right, Mr. Albert, go ahead. We extended the meeting. What did you want to say?
I just wanted to say that my understanding of the way staff and Jay had put together their original proposal, was it was based and predicated on the notion of maintaining the pavement index at where it was. Had he been given different directions to say, let's try an improvement, improve it, he probably would have generated a different map, which is why I would support the idea of at least bringing this back to have a further discussion.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes.
Just a couple of pieces of information, because I think we can kind of all get there. I think if the council would like to have a discussion about adding money to this particular contract for the season of pavement management, there's actually no urgency to do that tonight. The contract itself would allow us to increase the work by up to 25%. Work isn't scheduled to begin for another month anyway. So, you know, I hate to see the council not approve, I mean, this is a good contract for the city to improve streets, and it's even better if the council wants us to spend more money improving streets in San Carlos. And I think there's time to actually have that discussion, you know, rather than 10:30 at night, like Councilmember Grokot said, to agendize it or have that discussion in a couple of weeks, as actually as part of the budget discussion. You know, this isn't your only opportunity to do that in a vacuum. So I just wanted you to kind of think about it as you vote on this contract. You can vote for this contract and still talk about, two weeks from now, increasing the budget and the project scope here, and, you know, Mr. Walter will certainly be coming prepared with what that would mean in terms of a half million, so.
Okay. That sounds like a good idea to me.
So you got three to, yeah, to bring it back.
But not this, but we're going to still vote on this item.
We're still going to.
One way or the other.
I'm for that. So we have to agenda bringing this back?
I'm sorry?
We agenda having.
But not on this item, on adding on.
On adding on.
Yeah, on adding on, right. All right. So this item's on the, we've talked about it. Call the question.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
America Sully?
Yes. All right. So move on to item 11, Communication, Council Communications and Announcements. Does anyone have anything? All right. Staff comments on the city administrative items? Oh, I'm sorry. You got to be quick, guys. I'm moving here. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Just two quick items. I believe it was our last meeting that we talked about the Holly 101 interchange, is that correct?
Yes.
Just wanted to let the council know that Jay, Jeff and I met with the Transportation Authority last week, talked about strategies for asking the TA for additional funding in light of the fact that, as Jeff, as Jay put it, when we got deeper into the project, we identified that there were some utilities in the ground there that were not anticipated that have driven up the overall cost, and that was not known at the time of the appropriation. The TA, at least in principle, has agreed to work with us and potentially bring something to the TA board in the early fall or late summer for consideration of additional funding for the project. The last thing is, I attended a library board meeting this morning. We approved the budget. I think the most notable item that I just want to make the council aware is, there's been a long-running issue with library donor funds. This pertains specifically to the city. This is, pertains specifically to the cities of Portola Valley, Atherton and Woodside, where the JPA says any property tax collected that's in excess of the money that's spent on the libraries in those communities is set aside in a special fund that only can be used in libraries for those communities. That's, a lot of money is accumulated over time, as you might imagine. A compromise has finally been reached that says that that money shall be split 50/50 between the cities themselves and the overall JPA after any maintenance has been paid for the libraries in those communities. So it's going to result in this significant amount of funding going into the overall library system, which is good news for all of us.
Okay. Any other council comments? Okay, seeing none, staff?
One quick one. Tomorrow night, the Parks and Rec and Public Works Departments are hosting a public meeting on the Burton and Highlands Park lighting project. It's at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 13th tomorrow, in the San Carlos Library Community Rooms on the second floor.
All right. Anything else? If not, meeting adjourned. Thank you.